Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to this Budget Review Session, July 10, 2025. I'd call the meeting to order and inform the public of the location of the Open Meetings Act posted in the council chambers and acceptable to members of the public. This time, I'd like to ask for roll call, please.
Greenquist?
Here.
Arnz?
Here.
Webb?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Beckman?
Here.
Jensen? Lengy?
Here.
Hildebrand?
Here.
Mayor?
I'm here. All right, so we'll go into the presentation. Again, these are just presentations of the budget today. They're going to be, each department will have an opportunity to come and speak in front of the council. We'll ask questions as we need to and see fit, but nothing is being decided on today. It's just simply presentation. So, start there. We'll start with the presentation of the police budget.
Mayor, council members, city administrator, cordless, thank you for the opportunity to present the Norfolk Police Division's proposed budget. This year's request reflects a lean maintenance level budget focused purely on operational needs. Excluding the $3.975 million of capital improvement for the building expansion, which is from the half-cent sales tax, if you take that out, which Randy had mentioned at the previous meeting, excluding that, which our budget is up just 1.65% over last year. This is a very modest increase, well below the typical 3% guideline. Without separating that out, the building expansion part, you would be looking at probably 47% on paper is what it looks like, but that wouldn't accurately represent our conservative approach to operational spending. We've kept our core budget tight, knowing that the most of our strategic investment this year is centered around the building project. That said, we are making smart, forward-looking investments in technology that enhance both our capabilities and community safety. We're implementing license plate readers. It's a license plate recognition system or commonly called LPRs. And this budget includes funding to activate software and three patrol cruisers that are already equipped with the hardware. All of our patrol cars are equipped with the hardware to do this, but we're going to activate three of them to start with. Additionally, we are budgeting for five fixed LPR cameras to be installed at high-traffic locations, including key state highway entry points in Norfolk. These fixed LPRs are not only going to aid in law enforcement as far as identifying stolen vehicles, wanted persons, or patterns of criminal activity, but they also provide valuable traffic data. That data, including vehicle counts by time of day and also the type of vehicles, this can assist engineering, the street department, and economic development with planning, infrastructure, and growth analysis. We're also beginning conversations with schools and retailers about joining a cooperative camera network. So what I'd like to do is develop a network, a net of cameras within the city that would function in this same system. On the staffing side, I'm proud to report we've reached our goals of three full-time school resource officers. Thanks to gains in department staffing, it's a major milestone for school, safety, and youth outreach. Finally, we are evaluating full-size SUVs for future patrol use. With the amount of mobile technologies officers now carry, computers, printers, cameras, radios, long guns, space matters. For officers working 12-hour shifts and sometimes two to a vehicle, full-size SUVs are safe, offer a safer, more functional mobile office. It's a practical step in giving our team the tools and space they need to do the job right. And we have some big people that work for us, and when they get all this gear on, they're pushing double XL, triple XL, so a bigger SUV would be very helpful. In closing, this is a tight, responsible budget that holds the line on operational costs while continuing to move the department forward through selective improvements. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Questions?
You're budgeting for three more police officers from 2024 to 2025? Is that right? The proposed budget is three more than-
Our allotted number of officers is 43. I don't, I'm not sure what years-
Just that 18, that was in the budget for 2024 to 2025? Now you're budgeting for three more for this budget, is that right?
Last year, that was due to the retention bonus for the officers, and since the retention bonus was only a one-year and it was utilized three officer positions, so we took that money back from the retention bonus and put it back into the officer positions.
We're not increasing staffing from-
Okay.
-previous years.
Yeah.
So it was 21 a couple of years ago, we moved to 30, or we moved to 18?
Yes.
Back to 21.
But you're not fully staffed, though, right?
We are not. We are at, as of this day, we are at 38. But we have somebody retiring the end of the month. We got one person deployed, and then we're going to be hiring three officers in about 11 days.
And those guys are, are the academies done already with them, for those three?
Those three will have to go to the academy in, what, end of-
September.
Uh, first September into August, so.
And that's what you had talked about before. You had, we know usually don't get three guys in the academy, right? And now we-
Right. I had four slots, but we were only able to find three people.
Well, that's pretty good still.
Yeah. We'll take it.
Yeah.
So.
So with the one retiring, we'll be at 40 by the end of the fiscal-
Right now, we're at, yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah. Good job.
Other questions? Or comments? Well, you talked about the SUVs. How, how, as far as your capital improvement outlay, what are we looking for timeframe for that? You know, it's replacing the cruisers with SUVs. What's that timeframe?
I would just like to try them out and see if they like them, and we'll go from there.
Because what do you typically do, replace a cruiser?
We usually budget three vehicles every year.
Every year. So this year, you're budgeting for three?
And right now, we're just looking at a couple, so.
And they, yeah, every year, they get three. They budget, as you probably watched over the course of time, this year, as the financial constraints were reining in, pump the brakes on some of those purchases to make sure we knew what was taking place. As of now, they're researching that exact topic.
Okay.
And then we'll, once they have the research done, we give them the go and no-go on whether to purchase or not.
The three that are in this year's current budget have not been purchased because we've been in standby mode. I do have new quotes on them right now, and in fact, I was just out at GM this morning talking to a salesman about it as well.
Okay.
So are you thinking, Mike, that those two larger-sized SUVs will come in under the budget of what three mid-sized SUVs would be?
Yeah, they, they will. We budget about $47,000 some odd dollars for the Explorers. However, the, the full-size ones that we're looking at are about $52,000. The trade-off on that is that our upfitter, it used to be Electronic Engineering out of Sioux City, they're no longer upfitting or putting all the cop stuff in there for us, and we had to get a new upfitter. Number one, we had to find a new upfitter because it's, it's a specialty, and number two, it's more expensive. So, overall, it will save money in this year's budget by buying two larger SUVs, even though the upfitting is more expensive.
Other questions? Well, I think I got to ask the obvious, then. If we're going down one less vehicle, but we're going to be fully staffed, what's the situation, what's the scenario, and are we looking at for the next year or some sort of difference in a capital improvement to make?
We're sitting okay with vehicles right now. With the lack of staffing, we haven't racked up a whole lot of miles on them, and so we're sitting okay.
We used to have a program where we'd buy three cars, assign them to the detective year of training, and use them for about a year. The problem we were running into is that that was a year of warranty, and we'd rather have the vehicles out on the road, being driven by officers, when we have that, that three-year warranty on them. And we, in the fourth year, the first year detectives and three years out on patrol, in that fourth year, we're running into more maintenance issues. So if we're going to drive them hard, we want to drive them hard the first three years. Because we had a delay in our upfitting, I have cars waiting, they're coming on the 21st to start picking them up, but we have six brand-new cars ready to go to be outfitted. So, we're, this year, we're going to be introducing six brand-new outfitted police cars to our nine-car fleet. So we're going to be sitting pretty good with brand-new cars. Eventually, maybe we're going to have to make that fourth car purchase, but that wouldn't be for three or four years down the road.
We're still suffering from a slinky effect of the COVID situation, where ordered them one year, and it was a year or more later, and it's pretty typical for an ambulance or a fire truck to take that long, but not for your standard-issue Explorer, police-issue Explorer sort of deal. But that's been a situation, and probably your next question, or somebody's next question is, what do you do with the ones when, when they come off the line? Well, we're in a very unique and good position to be able to evaluate the quality of the, of the rigs coming offline. We have an incredible maintenance shop that keeps on top of all that stuff. So if it is a good, good-quality unit that we would trust in another division, we'll pass that down to the division. And you'll see one here at Admin, you'll see some at Housing and various other places for the divisions that just need personnel, transport, not necessarily trucks, of course. But the ones that are not good, we turn around and sell on a website called eGov, GovDeals, GovDeals. And it's been really good. We've had people buy vehicles from North Carolina to Washington. And so anybody local has the opportunity to get, especially during the COVID time when the vehicles crunch was really on. That was a, in my opinion, a very, very good move. Other questions or thoughts?
All right.
Do we allow, you want to allow public input?
Yeah. Any public input at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, Presentation of Special Narcotics Abuse Reduction Effort, or SNAIR, budget.
Inside? No, no motions, just presentations tonight.
The, the city of Norfolk is the financial agency for the SNAIR Drug Task Force. The SNAIR Drug Task Force consists of approximately 12 agencies throughout northeast Nebraska that pool their resources. The State Patrol, Norfolk PD, and Columbus all contribute personnel to the Drug Task Force, and everybody else, well, along with Norfolk, and everybody puts in their fair share of money. So on the Drug Task Force, you do have a revenue side. The revenue is $26,400 for the membership dues. We do, we did have a running balance through some very conservative fiscal management years ago. SNAIR was able to build up a $200,000 to $300,000 running balance, and we've, and that was also with JAG grant money from the state. Those grant funds have dried up. They do not fund Drug Task Forces anymore, so we're kind of on our own. So we are very conservative with how we utilize the money. It, most of the money goes to the off-site. We do have a office location separate from any police department. We pay rent on it, utilities. We have a little bit of office maintenance. Those costs are split in half between the Task Force and the Nebraska State Patrol. Rent is $1,400 per month. The Task Force pays 700, State Patrol pays 700. They split it 50/50. We do budget the entire amount in the budget, so that is why you will see that we don't spend all of our money. We only spend about half of our money. The biggest expense is buy money when we go out and buy drugs. We budget around $40,000 a year for that buy money. We are very proactive in asking for restitution through the court system to recover that money, which we do recover a portion of it, and only a portion. But we also are, since the State Patrol works larger conspiracy cases, a lot of the times, they have federal indictments. And when we have federal indictments, then we can get federal seizure money. And that, right now, there's probably about $16,000 sitting out there in a sharing account that we are waiting to be paid, and then that money goes back into SNAIR as well and helps fund and maintain the Task Force. It's really a straightforward maintenance, other than the buy money.
Questions about SNAIR?
I was going to ask a question of why, why do we put the full amount in there if only half is ours? How do, do you get paid by the state for the other half? Or how, how's that work, I guess? I'm not-
I'm going to defer why we have to budget the whole amount-
Yeah, that's what I, I really don't understand.
-to maybe my financial people.
Well, it's not, if we only owe half, why do we budget a whole? Does that make sense?
I asked you the same thing.
We've always done it that way.
No, and I get it. I just don't understand it.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand it either. It's the way we've done it, and we probably could easily get that amount.
Is it similar in nature to where we know we're going to have an expense, but we're going to have a grant in some sort, but we should budget or show the full expense being paid, and then the revenue coming in? Different than that?
It's different than that.
Yeah, they're net, the revenue's going back into the expenditure account, so that's different.
Well, and back in the day, we were getting the grant money, and you never knew how much grant money you'd be getting.
And that's probably what originally started that way.
Yeah, I guess I'm lost. So at here, you, I mean, we have an increase basically to cover expenses of the rental, maintenance, if you have some maintenance, and buy money. Does that sound right? I mean, in a, in a way, that's kind of what I'm hearing, but you only spend half of the budget-
Pretty much.
-every year.
Well, half of the utilities that is associated with the building and the, the rent. The buy money, that's still, that's all SNAIR money. State Patrol doesn't do anything with that. And that's 40,000. So, that's the over, over half of the entire budget is buy money.
So do we have an officer that goes to that building or stays there or does work out of there? How's that work?
The investigations unit has a drug investigator, a Norfolk PD drug investigator that's assigned to the Task Force. The office out of the Task Force building and/or Norfolk PD, or a lot of times, his car.
Makes sense.
Do you think with the police expansion that you could move that under the roof of the PD?
No, I don't. Part of the reason for having an off-site is because they are clandestine in investigations. They don't want to be identified. Believe it or not, drug criminals will drive through parking, law enforcement parking lots and identify cars. When our drug investigator gets close to a drug house and there's a target outside, he will be given a sing, a single finger wave because they recognize his car. So by keeping it at the off-site, we try and maintain that confidentiality. The State Patrol also uses it for, the State Patrol has SNAIR drug investigators and true B drug investigators. Some are assigned to the Task Force, some are not. The, the reason they pay for half the rent is because they're able to house all their drug investigators under one roof, and that's better for, you got the bullpen, somebody's talking about this investigation, somebody over here, overhears it, all of a sudden connections start being made. City of Norfolk puts in $6,000 out of the police budget per year into SNAIR, and it's all based upon population. The other agencies go down to as low as $1,500, but that what, that's what makes up that $26,000 for, $26,400 revenue.
Other questions? Anyone from the public have any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, Presentation of the Wireless 911 Budget.
Just for a little background, the Wireless 911 Budget comes from a tax that's on every cell phone. In Nebraska, it's 70, or 70 cents per line per month. That money totals up to around just under $5 million that's paid into the state 911 Wireless Fund. That $5 million is used to pay for Next Gen 911. A couple of years ago, the legislature passed LB93, I, don't quote me on that, bringing Nebraska into Next Gen 911. And what that means is moving from Annie and Ally, which is an address and a telephone number being identified on a 911 call, to a longitude and latitude. And actually, we're getting to the point where we're adding that Z coordinate in into altitude. Along with that, money is also divided amongst 63 Public Safety Answering Points, or PSAPs. Those 63 PSAPs, there's a funding model that's based, excuse me. There's a base amount that goes to every PSAP. After that, it is divided by population and, and call load, knowing how many calls our PSAP actually takes. Based upon that formula, they grant us X amount of money. This year, it's going to be, you're seeing 89,000 in revenue in the budget. Since we're starting budget early, we didn't have the award from the Public Service Commission yet. This year is actually 1,000, excuse me, $109,929, so an extra $20,000 in the, in the, in the pot. Wireless money can only be used for certain items. Those items involved anything, involved in answering a 911 call. Telephone lines, computer aided dispatch, GIS, mapping software. So that's why you see the expenditures in the 911 fund are very specific to the CAD maintenance, Call Works, which is our 911 answering equipment, and our GIS software maintenance with GeoCom. New last year was that we were now able to include council maintenance, which is our radio councils that are in dispatch. That is something that wasn't permitted before, but is now permitted. We have five councils. You will see there's two different listings. One says two and one says three. Number three is the ones that are owned by the Norfolk Police Department. The two are owned by, are donated to Norfolk PD by Madison County Sheriff's Office when we consolidate it. It's kind of interesting that the city of Norfolk did a fairly good job negotiating with Motorola, because our council maintenance for three is cheaper than Madison's council maintenance for two. But they are included in this wireless budget because we also receive the wireless funds from that Madison County used to, used to get for their dispatch center. The optic internet, Ethernet is also an important connection that is our fiber optics that connect the northeast Nebraska 911 region. So we're connected to Hardington, we're connected to Cedar, or Knox County, Dixon County, Dakota County, Wayne, and we share resources. Nebraska and South Sioux have the host computers, and all the other locations are remotes. So as a whole, the entire region is saving taxpayer money. Otherwise, I have to have a complete system. Center has to have one, Hardington has to have one. We're sharing resources in northeast Nebraska, and that also is saving money on the Ethernet connections from the state of Nebraska into the two hosts. The state of Nebraska had to run two lines costing about $70,000 each into Norfolk and two lines into South Sioux City. So there is $280,000 between the two. They didn't have to run those lines into the remotes. At 63, if they had to run two lines into 63 different dispatch centers, you can see how much money that would have cost. That is one of the benefits of regionalization, is that the state was able to cut down on those connections.
Questions or comments about Wireless 911? Anybody have any questions regarding Wireless 911 Budget? All right, seeing none, we'll move forward to the Presentation of the Norfolk-Madison Dispatch Budget.
The dispatch budget has several avenues of revenue that comes in. What those revenues do not cover is covered by the city of Norfolk and the Madison County, and Madison County. The uncovered expenses are laid out in an interlocal agreement between the city of Norfolk and Madison County, where Norfolk pays 2/3 of those uncovered costs, and Madison County pays 1/3 of those costs. The revenues that are coming in are the telecommunications occupation tax. This is an occupation tax paid on prepaid cell phones, minutes that you buy from Walmart or anything like that, estimated around $80,000. The 911 surcharge, that's that dollar that is imposed on the local telephone bills for every phone that comes into the Norfolk PSAP. This year, Madison County funding is going to be around $420,000, and Norfolk PD's funding is going to be around $840,000. The other two contracts that we have is this Stanton County, which I believe was signed in 2021 for, it started out at $200,000 and has been growing because of CPI over the few years. It's now up to $221,000. And we also dispatch, have a contract with the Village of Hoskins, which is around $3,000. So those are our revenue sources. As you can see, our starting balance was $657,000. That's a very healthy balance. The, we don't need to run that big of a balance. we don't need to run that big of a balance. So this year, compared to last year, uh, we're putting in less money in, into the fund, both on Madison's portion and our portion. So that is why you're seeing a decrease, uh, from this year from last year on the inter-agency contributions. It is pretty much a maintenance budget, just what we need to maintain salaries and operations. There's no bells and whistles. Um, everything that you see in there is being used or, uh, needed in daily operations of the dispatch center.
What's your ideal beginning balance then?
A radio council costs around $250,000. There is a board consisting of a county commissioner, the sheriff, Norfolk Police Chief, a member of the rural fire board, and a city council member that oversees the dispatch center and makes recommendations. That board came up with around $300,000. We should always have in reserve, so that if something catastrophic happened to one of our councils, we would be able to, uh, address that.
So you like, this year be a, any balance of neg-, of, you'll drop it 108,000 for the following, so you're just gonna, you'll just submit for the next few years, you'll continue to follow that model? Is that the plan?
Yeah, this, this budget is really in its infancy. You know, when we started out, we didn't know how much to budget. And, uh, Chief Miller and I sat down and went through a lot of different scenarios. And we tried to come up with a budget, but we're still massaging it all, all the time. And, um, especially with things being tight this year, we just don't need that big of a balance in this fund.
So, what, just a question. So what's, I'm looking at the ending balance from last year, the approved budget of 439. And then we start off with a 657 beginning balance. Why is that so different? I mean, obviously, a lot more funds came in than, because that was the, that was the budget amount, was the 439.
I think that bit was based upon, uh, expected expenditures, um, that we do during the budget. Are we going to spend this much money? And when-
Just didn't.
And we just didn't. So that caused that balance to grow. And part of that is there again, just because we're, we're still in the infancy of knowing exactly what we need to, uh, budget for in the, for dollar amounts. And there's always, as we get to Next Generation 911, um, there are certain costs that the state has assumed that we, as the city, no longer have to pay. And, uh, I'll be honest, when you look at a quest bill, it's hard for me to understand pertaining to 911. This is a selective router, this, what each charge is actually for. So over time, those bills have went down and decreased, because we don't need those services anymore. And the state has helped, assisted us in canceling those services. Because they're funding more of the, they're, they're doing a little heavier lifting than they used to financially.
So I didn't see this in the police, uh, presentation, but I'm assuming the $160,000 decrease in funding was reflected in that budget?
For the interagency transfer?
Yeah.
Yes, it was, sir.
By having the interlocal with the dispatch, what's it saving the citizens of Norfolk? Like, what would be the operational cost of our dispatch without this interlocal, roughly?
Well, you'd be operating two identical, uh, PSAPs. So Madison would have the same equipment that we would have, along with the maintenance that goes along with those, and personnel. Um, when we first, uh, combined our PSAPs together, we did a deep down-
Analysis.
Analysis of our staffing levels. And we ended up with a number of 16, or 14 dispatchers and two supervisors. Um, since then, our workload has increased, and we're finding out for staffing purposes, we need to bump that. And we did a couple of years ago, up to 16 dispatchers and, and two supervisors. Uh, to quantify that in a dollar figure, as far as the savings for, you'd have to look at all of Madison County. But absolutely, consolidation is a fiscally responsible move to, uh, save taxpayer money on the whole.
Thank you. So you talk about staffing, you know, obviously, you listen to the fire division, and ambulance calls are always increasing. I'm assuming the police calls are probably also on the rise to some extent. So have you budgeted for any additional, uh, employees for the coming year?
For the-
For the dispatch?
No, uh, we are currently in the hiring process. We, we've never made it to the, to that magic number of 18. 16 dispatchers and two supervisors. Once we get to that level, we would like to have four on each shift. And then we can, um, do an assessment as far as if additional staffing will be needed. But it's too premature to do that, because we're not even there yet.
This isn't really a huge dollar amount. I'm just curious.
Sorry, thank you. Um, this isn't really a huge dollar amount, but it is $6,000. I'm just, I was looking at the office supplies, and how it goes, 12,000 one year, 7,000, 5,000, 12,000, 12, I mean, what's going on there? Why is, why are the differences anywhere from, you know, 6 to 8,000 dollars? Office supplies, I mean, so that's why, just a curiosity question.
Uh, last year, we did not have to, uh, replace any computers. Computers go in account 64 office supplies. This year, I have to replace three of them at $2,000 a pop. So there's your 6,000.
Perfect. Thank you.
So last year, you had dispatcher two and dispatcher one. Well, last year, there was no dispatcher two. What is the difference between those?
We've been working with, uh, human resources, and some of our dispatchers are trainers for new employees. Um, that's, you're babysitting somebody for six months. Some of our employees have special talents, such as bilingual. And in discussions with, um, HR, it was felt that they needed to be, uh, appropriately compensated for those extra duties that they're taking on over the other dispatchers. Because it, training a new individual, whether it be an officer or a, that's three months for an officer, six months for a dispatcher, um, it wears on you. And right now, we've been training dispatchers for the last, almost continuously for the last 18 months.
Do you have a problem retaining those, or what is the-
No, we're, um, we had a little bit of attrition, but then we've, uh, tried to get up to that number 18. And, um, it's just, John Gary retired, um, we've had retirements, and we just-
Okay, okay.
No, that's one thing our, our dispatch center does not have a problem with, is retention. Um, other dispatch centers throughout the state do, uh, really struggle to find dispatchers. We have very senior dispatchers in, in our, in our PSAP.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, Mike, I sit on the, that 911 board as a councilman, um, I do think we should meet once a quarter at least.
Yeah.
I mean, just to kind of stay in touch with what's going on there.
We, we've fallen behind. And a lot of times, Todd was taking the lead on that, and we kind of do this. But, um, um, yeah, I, quarterly is probably what we need to be looking at. And in addition to bringing Madison, or excuse me, Stanton County into that interlocal as well, that's going to take a little bit more paperwork. But, uh, due to their contribution, I think they need to be, uh, a sitting member as well.
Yeah, in their defense, they've had a pretty busy last six to 12 months, too. Yep, good point. Other questions or comments about revenue or expenses?
Is there any parts Brian doesn't know about this budget that we should try to ask?
Yeah. Really rake them over the coals, I'd highly encourage that. Make the next ones easier for him.
Good job, guys. We kind of drilled you there, but good job. Additional questions from the public? Right, seeing none, we'll move on to item eight.
Good job, gentlemen.
Presentation of the housing budget.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Rita, if you'd like to come up?
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Administrator, and Council. I am your new Housing Director. I ha- I've met some of you, but not all of you. So Rita Heineman, I've been here since November. So this is my first budget with you, so go easy on me. But I've been doing budgets for 28 years. So, um, as you know, the Housing Division budget is one of the smallest budgets for the city. And so we've got six amazing staff that work together to serve the residents of the community, um, through the, the paperwork load that we carry to do that. We do a lot of, we're heavily burdened by paperwork. I think Andrew's figuring that out as he's, sits on the, the board now. So, um, increases in our budget, personnel costs went up slightly. Um, but the compensation study attributed to that benefits, and the COLA increase and the grade and step increases, but it wasn't a big jump. So we did have a recent development since I prepared this budget. Um, our accounting clerk is going to retire in February of 2026, at the end of the, that time period. And she's amazing, and she is going to be a loss to the Housing Division. So I'm hoping, even though it's not in here, that if we can find a little room to, two to three months, if we could get somebody in there that has an accounting background to train with her, she's willing to train, which is wonderful. Um, there's just so much, housing authorities are just heavily regulated. And so if we can get somebody in there to train, that would be great. It's, but it's not in the budget. So just putting that out there. Um, so then, the Housing Division on, let's see, yeah, training, sorry. So legislative budget, we've got travel and training. There's many mandatory staff trainings that they have to take in order to stay on top of the changes coming from Washington and the state. So we had an increase in, in that budget. HUD, NIFA, the Department of Housing, Urban Development, and then Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, which helps us build those tax credits, the new ones we're building. We're doing three, in three years, basically, up here. And then we're going to do that Syracuse Flats project, which is with the state DED, that we're working on that one. Um, so we've got a lot of good things happening as far as the Housing Division goes, um, in the works. And two are done, and two more to go. One 2026 and one in 2027. Um, I'm heavily involved with FADA, it's Public Housing Authority Directors Association. I'm a trustee on their board. It's a national organization. They meet three times a year. So we saw a slight increase in the budget. We help get things stopped before they get pushed down to our, to the Housing Authority levels many times. Or we can get change from years ago. Some, it takes us a while, but we work through with our elected officials, and we meet with them. So, well, I usually meet several times a year with them if I can to try to talk to them about what's happening, how it impacts our residents, because that's usually what it boils down to, is how is this rule impacting people? So, um, so we did have that. And an increase in admin and overhead, and that's the biggest increase you're going to see, but it's, it's housing study time for 2026. One thing Candace and I are going to partner, and we'll just do one housing study instead of two, because she, she'd done one, and then the Housing Department had done one. So this way, we're going to do it together. But Neighbor Works is going to donate some money to it. We're also working with the Madison Battle Creek. I know there's some interest from them in being a part of it, trying to get Tilden Meadow Grove and, I can't think of the other grove that's in Madison County, I'm so new up here. Newman Grove. So, um, trying to get them interested too. But it's $20,000 is what, what it will cost to do the entire thing together, which is about the same that it costs to do just the Norfolk one, um, five years ago. So it's a pretty good deal. The state, uh, NIFA, has changed the way they do the grant. So we're going to apply for the grant. We're still kind of working through that. Um, there's been some, it was a housing study grant, grant. They've changed the name. They're kind of broadening it. But it'll still apply to housing studies. So I'm working on that right now to get those grant funds as well. Um, the Housing Division brings approximately a third of the budget monies for our budget back into the city. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but I just wanted to remind you of it. Um, through Section 8, the tax credit properties, and then the management of the multifamily, the management fees all come into the city. So a third of our budget, if not a little bit more, comes, comes back in. And we're growing, so that's just going to only increase as the years, the next couple of years go on, and we get, get the new ones filled up and such. So, um, and I guess, do you have any questions for me on anything in the housing budget, or about housing in general?
Rita, when this comes back for the hearing, will that, will that personnel number be different if we include the three, three months of training?
Well-
We'll talk about it. Is that a question for Randy?
Yeah, I think we recently found out, so it's-
Jessica and I found out about this a couple of days ago. And, uh, I don't know if Jessica's worked through those dollars, because there'll be some offsetting savings when you go from somebody at the top of the scale to expect somebody at the bottom of the scale. So we, I expect those numbers will change, but I don't know by how much at this point.
And that was the housing accountant specialist?
Accounting specialist.
Accounting specialist.
Yeah.
Thank you.
She's been there 19 years, so very dedicated, knowledgeable.
Your training budget, do you do any of, like, online, or is it all traveled?
Some is online. We did, some of the staff were needing trained on, on the HUD side of things for Section 8 this year, and then on NIFA. So with that accounting specialist or clerk, whichever, um, you want to call it. But with her retiring, she also does tax credits and helps fill them. She's taking care of those as well as her accounting duties. So we're trying to train new staff to be able to fill those units. With the new tax credits, when you fill the units, it's the most important time, because you've got to make sure everything is correct, because you're dealing with IRS. So you could lose the, the tax credits for the investors, which means we wouldn't get new tax credits in our community. And we don't want that. We want to keep being able to build affordable housing for the low income and, and that. So, so most of it is in-house. Like, we do Fair Housing Training, Nebraska NARO, it's the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. They have an annual conference that three, usually three go to. I may go, I may just send them in the future. Um, I did back off. I was also vice president of another board, but I, I told them I needed to just step back a little bit. So I'm going off that here in September. So that kind of helped with bringing it down a little bit. I know it went up. I think, you know, Gary wasn't sure of what all I was involved in. Um, it's so important that we speak up, because things just get pushed down to us. Otherwise, and it's, it doesn't make sense for the people, it doesn't make sense for the agencies. Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments for housing?
This isn't really speaking to the budget, but what's been, um, being new to the role, what's, what's been one of the biggest things that you've implemented change, or what's one of the biggest, uh, um, obstacles that you, you're working, challenges, what you're working with?
It's a good question. So as many of you might know, I came from Fremont. So here we've got, when we get done building, it'll be 400 and some units of housing. There we had, and Section 8 vouchers. There we had 600 and some units of housing in Section 8 vouchers. Um, I had a staff of 18 plus one at another agency that we managed, a part-time maintenance. So there was 19 of us, you know, just adj- making the- So there was 19 of us, you know, just making the adjustment. But I'm watching these, it won't count me, I'll count five of them. Watching what they accomplish with just five of them. As we grow, I can see we're going to have needs. We're going to need more and at least another one in the office. Going to try to contract out maintenance, because we're just growing so much here in the last few years. If we're going to provide the public with quality product, we're just, we've got to, we've got to do better. They're doing excellent, but they're doing it, they're busy all day long. There's no time to, to do much, anything else but work. And they're, they're good at it and they're tenured, and so that helps. If they weren't, if you were training new people, it probably wouldn't work very well. So, but challenges, you've got a great community. So a lot of good things happening.
You started in November?
November, yep.
Well, it sounds like you've got a good handle on things. I mean, going into it and with your background, I think that really helps. Yeah.
It helped. I enjoy it up here.
Good, good. We're a nice little friendly town.
Others?
Any other questions? Questions from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number nine. Presentation of the Community Development Block Grant Budget, or CDBG. Sheila, she'll be handling that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In the CDBG budget, there's not a lot of activity this year. We were previously awarded a downtown revitalization grant for $435,000. So that grant is in progress this year. We're working on nine facade improvement program projects right now, and that totals 128,000. This grant also funds some infrastructure improvements downtown. And we're expecting those improvements to get done this summer. Last year, we applied for an owner occupied rehab grant for 498,000, but we were not awarded this grant. So that's why you'll see that there's a decrease in the other state funding. So included in this budget is 400,000 of grant income and expense in case we apply for another grant this year. So this 400,000 and the remaining downtown revitalization grant of 198,000 are the only grants that we have budgeted. We're also budgeting to spend the $193,100 of program income that we have, so that this will then bring the ending balance to zero. It's a pretty short, short budget. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Any questions from the public? All right, seeing none. Move on to item 10, a presentation of the Capital Projects Budget.
Okay, I'll continue with this one. Our beginning fund balance increases about 1.7 million. And this is primarily the sales tax for the police station expansion and renovation. We're, we're budgeting 1.5 million in miscellaneous federal grants. Almost 1 million is the RACE grant that goes for trails. There's also 42,000 for a community forestry grant and 511,500 for a conservation grant for the adult softball field. Other state funding, we are budgeting 562,500. And this is the second half of the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund Grant for the Illuminate the Riverpoint District Project. We are budgeting about 654,000 for other intergovernmental funding. 100,000 is the college's contribution for the Tahazuka Team Lockers. And the remaining 554,000 is the rural fire district's contribution for a fire truck. Transfers in are transfers of keynote funds and council priority dollars from the admin budget. Plus, there's just under 4 million of sales tax transferred for the police station. So you'll see that, that sales tax coming into the general fund and then we transfer it out. Then it's a revenue of the Capital Projects Fund and we expend it out of that fund. So you'll see that revenue in, in both the general fund and the, and the Capital Projects Fund, but it's still just the same sales tax. Proceeds of debt of 970,000 is public safety bonds. And this will fund an ambulance, warning sirens, defibrillators, and mobile data computer upgrade. And that is all of the revenues, and I'll let Lyle talk about the expenditures.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Lyle Lot Operations Guy for the City of Norfolk. She talked about the money coming in. I'll talk about the Capital Project money going out. Starting, I'll pull double duty here perhaps, so bear with me. On page 62 of 211, that's where we'll. Where we'll start. Talk about the bond insurance or bond issuance costs. You'll see two land acquisitions here, one of which is a property on South Fifth Street, I believe, just north of Tahazuka, in the Tahazuka area. City acquired a purchase agreement there back about 2020, 2020. That is a deal where the, the current owner that's living there has nine years to decide when they are ready to sell. And the beginning of the ninth year, between the ninth year and the 10th year, the city has the opportunity, the option, but not necessarily the obligation to go buy it. But the amount has already been designated, the 234 that's there is for accounting the purchase of the property and for the demolition of what's there, whatever would be needed. There'd be potentially a shed on site as well. The next land acquisition, you'll notice it went from 399,000 down to 125,000 was, went down because of the purchase agreement you approved at the last city council meeting for the property at 312 McKinley Drive, the Gary property. So that has been reduced in that to reflect that. Going further down the line. If there's stuff that you want to talk about, we sure can. Otherwise, the next thing I'll point out would be in account 82, some, some of the zeros in the right column. This year, the, notice the Johnson Park project has been wrapping up. If you have watched, there's new windows throughout this building so far. I haven't heard zero complaints about the windows. In fact, they've been, they've really helped with the noise. I'm confident they're going to be helping with the energy efficiency. And if I hear zero complaints, that's, I take that as a very good sign, very positive. And the shop at Tahazuka has, the heating element of that has been wrapped up. On into account 84, notice a couple of snowplows there. One was per ordered in October of 2024. As we mentioned earlier with the police vehicles, it's, or vehicles in general, it was bad based on the COVID situation. And it's always been an issue for delivery of months of any sort of truck type vehicle. Since it was ordered October 2024, I think we're anticipating this one to arrive in August, perhaps September before the snow falls. And then actually coming back to Councilman Arn's discussion before, in the CIP from, CIP discussion on June 23rd, the, the trade-in value, we, we listed that before as $10,000. And we've been in contact with the folks that you, from Wausau. And we're going to try and sell them that. It sounds like it's very supportive of, within their community. This is another wonderful opportunity. We've done it in the past, long time past with the equipment as far as ambulances or fire trucks, where if we have a good, solid piece of equipment and we have the opportunity to share it with a local community, a community close by, we'll, we'll try and give them the first opportunity at it while also trying to maximize potential for the trade-in that comes along, so that they, their taxpayers can save money. And oftentimes, a lot of their, their citizens come to work in Norfolk anyway. So that, that's progressing forward. See another one listed there for 308,000 bucket truck to work on the traffic signals. To tune at 175,000, that one's in the street division. Notice the sirens. Last year was listed as 120,000. This year's 240. It looks like it's doubled, but actually we have not paid for the ones from the install yet this year. Still in, in the process there, so that's why it's doubled up. The ambulance that was ordered in January 25, along with, was, is anticipated to take, to be here later this year, possibly early 2026. And the fire engine is probably still a year out. Flood recertification keeps chugging along. Going on to page six, bottom of page 62, on to page 63, talks about the landscape master plan as well as everything else that's listed there for the, the RACE grant. Also hidden in there is the, not hidden necessarily, but at the top, there's a whole bunch of RACE grant components. But you'll see the playground. One of the questions we often get is, okay, which playground is up next? And talking with Nate from Parks, the, this one is designated for the Berry Hill area. Continuing on down the list there, the. Tennis court resurfacing is back to zero. Northwestern First Omaha Avenue Trail is zero. And we have in total expenditures of, just short of $12 million. Leaving an ending balance of 3.7 million. With that, I'd take my best shot at answering whatever questions you may have. Actually, go ahead, Councilman Lang.
In the 82, Lyle, there's the Tahoe Team Lockers, 115. What's that entail or, I thought we were done with the project, so.
Yep, so actually Nate and I were just talking about that. So Nate, if I, if I mess this up, feel free to, actually you can come up and talk about it. So that, the Team Lockers was a donation. There's, there's money from the COLA, COLA donation.
Right.
So not necessarily going only to the lockers, but to other improvements as well, because that's what the intent was for that money. And that's what, sounds like we're going to do. Go ahead.
We have a backstop that we still need to finish up.
Oh.
And we're hoping, we also had some grant money come in from the Kansas City Royals as well. And so if there's any, any of those funds that are left, we're going to probably do the, the temporary outfield fence at, at Field Three. So, and then also the last thing, if there's still some money left, we want to get that playground replaced as well. So we're doing what we can and stretching those dollars as far as we can.
But that playground's been there since the 90s.
Maybe the 40s.
Have we, have we done anything to address the drainage in those fields?
Nothing that's been brought up to, to me that I'm aware of right now, but.
So, so you still need a canoe after a rain to get from first, from home to first on field number two?
I hope not, but.
You do.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Also as part of this is the CIP, which we can go over again. However, on what, June 23rd, we spent an hour, hour and a half talking about it as well. So instead of going through it, I mean, we sure can talk about things if you have questions or comments there. We can do that.
And I might point out, well, so we're talking about the Capital Projects Fund, that the $4 million almost of sales tax that Sheila talked about earlier, that's being, actually included in the budget twice, because it's, by state law, it's got to be deposited in the general fund and then we're transferring it over to the Capital Projects Fund to spend it. If you take out that, almost $4 million from the taxes number that's in the general fund, you won't have a 24.88% increase in taxes. You'll have a little over a 4% increase in taxes. So that voter-approved sales tax is why that taxes number seems so high.
Hey Randy, in the future, can, can you get the microphone? I can barely hear you most of the time.
Yeah, I will, I will do that. I was, I was just pointing out, I'll say it again, as I'm leaning in a little closer. The, if you take out that additional half-cent sales tax was approved by the voters, it's almost $4 million. It's also budgeted in the general fund as well as here. If you take that out, 4 million out of the general fund tax number, that gets that increase down from 24.88% to a little over 4%. I just wanted that, to point that out.
And I have an update as well. Literally just received it in the fact that the ambulance and the fire engine are not expected to be here until the end of 2026. Yep.
Randy, with this Capital Projects Fund, do we have a breakdown of what's grant money? What's being bonded? What's coming out of general?
Yeah, I believe we break that out in the CIP.
Yeah, I know that's in the CIP, but is that, is there?
Another place to see that?
Yeah, so we can.
I think what, like what Councilman Webb's asking, just like within this worksheet, instead of going into the, the, the whole chart, if you just kind of had a quick breakdown synopsis of, of these payments and then the, the revenue stream that's going to, you know, so just like, for instance, you talked about the police station renovation, you know, it'd be nice just to have a chart listing what's on this, this particular page and then the chart stating, you know.
Which page are you talking about specifically?
62.
62.
62, just to make it simpler for council and public to look through instead of going into the.
What if we just put a dash after each project and?
That'd be perfect.
Funding source right after it. I think we could do that easily.
Yep, and then just, so we can, so while you're looking through it, you're already, you can allocate the funds in your head as you're going through it.
Okay.
I'll say, I thought the same thing. Glad Webb brought that up. So I'm looking at Illuminate the Riverpoint District's 925,000, but we know most of that is grant money.
Right.
And so it'd be good to know where that money's coming from, just to have an idea.
The one, and then just the one question I have is on item, and code 87, flood control recertification. Can we go in that just a little bit as far as what, the 785,000, yes, but then I know obviously it's going to take more than that long-term. How are we sitting as far as getting to that ultimate goal where, when we do have to decide the flood point or the flood control recertification, where how we're sitting financially at that point in time?
Steve can probably answer better how those funds flow and.
Because that's going to be a big one, and I don't want that to surprise us.
Flood control recertification project and process, the update, latest update on that.
So you've got the 785,000 sitting there. Is that just for the certification or is that just for, or is that work abroad, work after the certification or how's that?
That is, that is the remaining, remaining engineering.
Fee for the certification.
To get to construction documents.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's permitting, there's probably, I don't remember the exact numbers. There's probably a couple hundred thousand in there relative to permitting the project through the Corps of Engineers. But that's engineering fees.
So with, with that, you know, with that being said, with the engineering fees, the dollar amount that's going to take to certify it, where's that placed at right now? Where's the placeholder for that?
That is in our CIP. I'm thinking it's around 7 million out there. Fiscal year's 27, fiscal year 28. Little carryover for into 29, that would be updates to the. The operations manual for the levy is probably maybe paying off a little retainage in the construction contract.
So are you basing those?
We'll know, you know, right now, obviously that's a couple of years out. We'll know as we move through the remaining portions of, of engineering and are able to base the construction estimates now on final engineering documents. I don't expect that number to go up.
Okay. I guess that's kind of what's going to happen. All right, all right, thank you.
Steve, we've been talking about this for quite a while. Do we have concerns with the flood control? Are we behind schedule on that or are we good?
One of the delays was kind of post, post 19 and the flood and some remapping of FEMA, of our, you know, the Elkhorn River and the Norfolk or the Elkhorn River slowed things down. So we're. Based, my best understanding right now is they are ready to move forward. That, that information is available to the engineering team. So I, I would expect here towards, towards the end of fiscal year 26 to be in the permitting stage with, with sort of the, about 90% plans. And then I expect about a year in permitting.
I'll, I'll add just a little bit to that, because I think we had, way before Webb was on, but we had conversations way early on that we knew the certification was going to come up and we wanted to start this process sooner than we were asked to, because we figured it would take quite a while. So that's, that's probably another reason it's drawn on for a lot of years now.
And it's, it's the remapping that is driving the recertification. If FEMA wasn't remapping, we wouldn't necessarily need to. If FEMA wasn't remapping, we wouldn't necessarily need to recertify.
Yeah, you're right. Councilman Grandquist, that was probably twenty fifteen or so, twenty sixteen, or we caught wind that was coming, so something, that's when we inserted, or it got inserted. We, this city inserted it in the CIP. Since then, there was a flooding and the damages that came along with it to be added to it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Questions for the public? Jim McKenzie, I think one of my questions got answered, and that was the flood control recertification. I see that keeps getting bumped out a year at a time. I think we're bumped out two years from two years ago, so. Anyway, didn't know if that was a concern as far as safety issues on that or not. The other question that I had was the landscaping per landscape master plan. That went from eight hundred and fifty-three thousand to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. It dropped by about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Was that, did we spend that money last year? Are we reducing the budget? What, what's the reason for that decrease?
So we'll, we'll go back to the capital, to the CIP plan, but tho- those dollars are contained within our Capital Projects Fund. So they're in, they're in a fund by thems, well, not by themselves, but they're in the Capital Projects Fund, which is the budget that we're reviewing. What's happened here is we're, you can see the one point five million in the, in the total funds. We've spent two hundred and seventy-four, a little over two seventy-four to date, spread across two or three different projects. We're holding three hundred and, little over, a little under three hundred and twenty-nine thousand there in fiscal year twenty-six. The conversation with council has been that there's, there's some desire as we get the intersections, the DOT work done at the intersections of Highway eighty-one and two seventy-five to get into that particular, that particular corner and do some landscape improvements in that corner as a main entrance to the community. The rest of it, another nine hundred thousand you can see has been pushed out. Can't see those fiscal years, but it's been pushed out to what looks like twenty-eight and twenty-nine. So it's, it hasn't been spent or diverted. They, they exist in the Capital Projects Fund.
So I, I guess my hard, my question is, we talked about, there was five hundred thousand dollars in the CIP that we, of extra leftover money that we use to kind of solve this year's budget. Does that mean there's still nine hundred thousand kind of just sitting in this budget for future landscaping? Is it just sitting in here?
No, it's not. That whole amount is not sitting in the Capital Projects Fund. It's part, I mean, i- if you want to think about it, part of it is, part of it will be funded with future transfers. So again, like when we do those transfers, it's not a dollar for dollar for, of what is in the Capital Projects Fund because we try to keep that transfer even, increase it for inflation and make sure that when we do that, we'll, we'll have enough money within those whole ten years to fund it.
Right, so what happened here is, is, as there were project increases, as there was a desire to, to push some of that out to a, to a future date, to, to keep the full value of the master plan in the Capital Projects, but to push some out for further conversation as, as other things develop within the community. And as other things come into the capital, Capital Projects budget that are general funded. Like Sheila said, we, A, we needed to move some stuff out and it made sense to move some of the master landscape stuff out three, four years to balance that, that fund.
Was there a transfer in the current, this budget year of that eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, was there a transfer of that amount? No?
No.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, did, does anyhow, in any way, shape or form, is this part of that five hundred thousand dollars that we're using to plug the budget?
I mean, the, the three hundred and some thousand is, okay, that amount is in the Capital Projects Fund, sitting there for landscape.
Okay, so how is that, how is that exact amount sitting there if we're only budgeting that for next year? How is it already sitting there?
Because if you look at those extra transfers, that is money that's in the Capital Projects Fund. And since that is sitting there from previous years, we were able to reduce this year's transfer to zero. So there's not gonna be any transfers for these general items, general fund, general revenue items.
I think I, what you're getting at, obviously, is probably what, the, and I tend to have the same line of questioning on it because we, me and you went back and forth on the one point two million. I think we were, that's when we were talking about the corridor, corridor improvements money that was sitting out there. And I'm sure this is kind of that funding, it's one point, I don't know, the thing in front of me now, one point five, and you know, we had some back, back and forth on what those funds should be utilized for. I think what Jim's getting at is we're a portion of this fund used to reduce this year's budget to fall within what we need to be at because the stream's coming in, as far as revenue streams coming in. Am I correct? That's kinda.
Well, the, I guess I would.
And I guess that's, that's a correct assumption because you reduce it to zero, so.
Yeah, and, and push that out.
And it, but it reduced that, the expenditures from that particular line item to zero this year. So we didn't have those expenditures on this year's budget, which is a five hundred thousand dollar reduction from what we previously anticipated.
The transfer.
Right, so he's right on, Jim's right when he's, I'm gonna, you know, give you credit. It's a good question.
I got something, right?
But I think that is, that is a very, it's, it's a, it's a line item that has a lot of different feelings about, within, within your council, how those monies are used.
I mean, I'm, I'll, I'm gonna take a little.
Is that assumption correct? I mean, I'm not trying to.
The Capital Projects Fund is like a.
I get it, I understand.
It's, it's a safe box over here, and every year we put whatever, three hundred thousand into this safe box. And all of these general revenue capital expenses come out of that box. And if costs go up, like, like all this streets equipment, if a piece of snowplow equipment goes up, a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars or whatever's going on in there, all of a sudden a piece of equipment breaks and we've gotta spend two hundred thousand dollars that we weren't anticipating. Everything else within that box that's gonna get expended across this ten years has to get pushed. But my impression is we don't go into that box and pull money back out to put into our general revenue fund other than the expenses that are actually incurred in a given year.
But as you change expenses in there, then there's less, less need to.
Well, they never go down.
Transfer your, from the general fund into there, basically. It, it's, it's kind of a weird black box, which it's, it's really hard to follow the funding in there.
Yeah, but, but I think, I think that the revenue that goes in there is, is pretty consistent every year. I don't think the revenue necessarily goes down. It's, it's consistent or, or up. I know those two over there can answer that, but again, it's a, it's a ten-year model of, of funding.
Are we putting the same amount in that every year?
And increasing it for inflation.
Okay, and how much per year are we putting into the CIP?
Oh, let's see. Well, if you go, Lyle, if you can go to the Capital Projects Fund, we can see what we put in there last year. The transfers in the revenue detail. Next page. So six hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and two. So when we started the budget, that's what we were doing. We were taking that number and increasing it for inflation.
Okay, so did that start at five hundred thousand a year or something? And this is where it's at now? Or where did that start at?
Oh, I don't know.
Don't have any idea?
Have to go way back and look. I'm not sure.
So you're transferring that as a regular amount factored with inflation every year, okay? And then if you don't spend the items or if you spend less in the CIP, then it just sits there?
Yes, yes, that's correct. And then, so then there'll be some years in the CIP that it's showing more expenditures than the transfer because there was some leftover from the previous year.
So how much, can I ask, I mean, how much excess is just sitting there that's leftover from previous years?
I would have to look that number up.
Okay, so when we utilize five hundred thousand to plug this year's budget, there's more leftover in there that's, that we can use in future years to plug the budget?
I can tell you that the ten-year projection, it gets down to about nineteen thousand, and I don't remember what year out it was.
The, the leftover amount gets down to nineteen thousand?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, if you could send that information to me, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number eleven. Presentation of the ARP budget.
Okay, I will talk about the ARP budget. This is, this is even smaller.
Page seventy-nine?
Page.
Page eighty, okay.
So this is even smaller than the CDBG budget. We're not budgeting any revenues or any expenditures. So we, all the funds have been obligated prior to the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four deadline. And as of today, there's one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars that's remaining to be spent. And this will be spent on street projects prior to the end of this fiscal year. So once all of these funds are spent, then we'll close out this fund. Oh, thank you.
Any additional questions? Members of the public, any questions? Item number eleven. Seeing none, we'll move on to item twelve. Presentation of the City Highway Allocation Fund or our CHAF budget. Steve, that one's gonna be led by you, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, council. Members of the public present and not present if this is broadcast. This year, our, our beginning balance forward for our city highway allocation budget is four million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand. We anticipate one million, fifty-three thousand and some federal grant funds largely related to our Raze Grant. Highway allocation funding is estimated at three million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand. So just under four million. It tends to move up at about fifty thousand dollars a year. Total, total intergovernment revenues, five million, forty-nine thousand. Some interest income, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Inter, inter-fund operating transfer in, this is some, this is two hundred thousand dollars of council priority dollars that are being transferred in over the last few years. Now, if you look at last year's, you'll see we had four hundred, that four point five million, that was kind of part of that five million, potential five million dollar bond, if we wanted to bond some street repairs. Why is it not five million? And it did, there's a, there's kind of a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that was going to fund that and some transfers, including that two hundred thousand. So that, that was spent in the prior year, and so we had lowered it by, by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's, that's why that's not five, five million. This year, we've taken that five million out of the budget, based on the conversation of the police station bond and using any residual remaining funds after the police station project is paid for to come back and do hopefully five million dollars there worth of street repairs. But, so that's why that is, is no, is no longer shown as part of our revenue. Total revenue then, budgeted for for the year, five million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-four thousand and eighty-five dollars. Total funds available currently in the City Highway Allocation Fund then would be estimated at nine million, five hundred and forty-nine, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. I won't go through the detail on the next page of that. We'll, unless there's questions, I'd like to go on to the expense side. We'll re, review the expenses for the year.
See, I, see if I got one.
Yep.
The inter-fund transfer from council priority dollars of the two hundred thousand, that's gonna continue to come into that?
Right now, that is set up in the budget to continue. So to pay, to pay for that five million dollar bond, that was gonna be paid for by reducing the transfer. There's a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar transfer every year that, that goes out of the City Highway Allocation Fund into the general revenue fund. And we were gonna pay for the five million dollar bond by reducing that down to that four hundred and fifteen thousand by, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, about two hundred and fifty. And then the additional, yeah, about two hundred and fifty. And then the council priority was gonna be the other two hundred thousand to pay for that bond. So it's gonna take, well, rather than transfer four fifteen out, we were only gonna transfer.
I'm on.
Yeah, he's on. So historically, we transfer four hundred and fifteen thousand out of CHAF. Rather than transfer four fifteen, we were gonna reduce that transfer by two hundred and fifty thousand. So we're gonna leave to an, an extra two hundred and fifty thousand in CHAF to help pay for the bond. The other portion of the bond payment was gonna come from this two hundred thousand dollar transfer.
But right now, we're waiting on the bond, we're waiting, it's a wait.
We're waiting on the bond, and I'm not necessarily familiar with some of the background conversation there, but what I understand is the two hundred thousand is proposed to stay in the budget to continue to fund street, street maintenance.
But the bond, wait, wait on the bond because of the police station.
But the bond, yeah, the bond itself is, is removed from the budget.
Okay. But at any time we start seeing that we're maybe not doing as well as we thought, as far as what's with the police station, there could be discussion, okay?
Correct. Does that make any other questions around that?
And you presented that same thing at the meeting a while back, so.
Expenses, building ground and plant maintenance, a hundred thousand. Legal notice and advertising, there's no bonding, so there's no legal notice or advertising or other professional fees anticipated there. The inter-fund ground transfers, the four hundred and fifteen thousand. I'll give just a little bit of history on that. At least the, some history that I, I'm aware of. I went back to two thousand and two, and I could see that in two thousand and two, that four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar transfer existed way, all the way back then. It's been generally consistent through the years, but it has gone up and down. Just to give a perspective, back in two thousand and two, the total highway allocation fund budget was about one million, probably around one point nine million, one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand. So this would have been about twenty percent of the budget at that time. In two thousand and twenty-six, I think there were six hundred and thirty thousand dollars moved out of, out of City Highway Allocation Fund into the general revenue fund. That was almost thirty percent of the budget at that time. More recently, since, since probably twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we had, did, we did have a couple of years in there where it went down as low as a hundred and forty-five thousand back, kind of coming out of the COVID area. I believe some of that was to help fund Michigan Avenue is my recollection at that time. But generally, aside from, you know, aside from maybe a couple of things right in that timeframe, it's been pretty consistent at four hundred and fifteen thousand since at least two thousand and two. Currently, the, the next, and again, currently, we're budgeting about four million. So over time, even though that tran, that transfer stayed the same, the amount of revenue we're getting from gas taxes, motor vehicle licensing fees has gone, has gone up roughly doubled. So that four fifteen represents about ten percent of our, of our CHAF budget at this time. Infrastructure, we'll go through those infrastructure projects. Infrastructure, we'll go through those infrastructure projects, that next line item there, 87, anticipating about a little over 4 million, 4,173,000 in, in expenses this year. Some debt service, this is the, primarily the Benjamin Avenue bond. It's Benjamin Avenue, Michigan Avenue. This is, this is the bonding for that. We're a couple of years away. I do have my cash, my 10-year model here, and I could tell you exactly if you wanted to know, but I think we're two years away from paying bond and, and, and principal, or interest and principal on that bond. So total expenses anticipated in this budget, 5,426,239 dollars. Would give us a new ending balance in CHAF of 4,123,155 dollars. On the next page then is some more, is some of the detail around those numbers. I do have a couple of corrections to mention. When we look down, I'll just go down to the capital outlay, number 87. We are not going to get to the downtown mid-block crossings, so I need to add that 22.5 back in there. That is, that is some grant funding. Also, we're not going to get to the Benjamin Avenue and Victory Road intersection study this year, and so I need to bring that 45,000 back in. Aside from that, you can see the street contract work, that's a 900,000. Microcelean Armory Cult, we're budgeting 500,000. Additional engineering to finish up the plans and specifications for 25th Street. We really, we're just at about, I'd say we're barely at 20% right now, but we are kicking that off. We'll be having some landowner meetings here later this month with adjacent landowners. And then from there, moving into, into design for that. Some traffic, this is just generic, a generic number in here for some traffic signalhead pedestrian actuated system improvements where needed in the community. Industrial road extension, that's that, we had put 100, 150,000 dollars spread over two years, so 75,000 dollars a year we have in the budget for the next two years as a cost share with the county to do a corridor study for the westward extension of the industrial highway. So that's what that number is. 200,000 dollars in for gap paving Northwestern and Jefferson. I know there was some conversation recently around maybe we need to look at Washington. I would say because with the potential RACE grant, Washington would make more sense at this time to look at than Jefferson. I guess in general, I, I look at this more as a gap paving line to, to look at these two areas. The gap paving, just historically, we have cost shared, and so what this is, is a cost share. It's not necessarily the full expense of those projects, but it would be a city cost share towards those projects. That's just based on the history of some of our gap paving we've done, 15th Street, Georgia, Square Turn. We cost share those, those projects with the adjacent landowners. Vacate Phillips, 6th to 7th reopen park. It's a conversation that's been driven down in that area by one of the industries that's in that area. We've been receptive to that conversation. 6th Street cuts right through their compound. And, and so there's a, I think a good conversation to look at the safety aspects of closing 6th and reopening 7th. We would look at that in, as a larger part of the RACE grant and probably try and accomplish that as a function of those RACE grant improvements that would be on 7th Street. The next line there, 330,000 dollars, that's our, that's our contribution. It's roughly 5% of the Department of Transportation's Mill and Overlay Project here on Highway 81. The remaining items there are all related to the RACE grant. It's broken down into different sections of the RACE grant, so you see three different line items there. The last, the last item with our, with our continued annexations going west on, on Benjamin Avenue now, all the way out to Highway 35 in anticipation of another annexation over there as we look, look to get some development on that last eastern portion there. I anticipate we're going to need to put in streetlights along Benjamin Avenue from Victory Road all the way out to Highway 35. And so that's, I've been working with NPPD to kind of look at the design and get that, get a cost estimate from NPPD. And they're estimating about 385,000 to do that. Any questions?
Steve, I got one. I think it'd be on page, and it might come into page 88, but the industrial, or the, excuse me, the Benjamin Avenue Victory Road intersection? Did that get, did that get axed then?
I want to put 45,000 back in, into that to study that. That's, I hear, I hear, I hear quite a bit from our industrial, some of the industrial out there, NIMCO, Nucor.
Aren't they supposed to be using industrial highway in 35 and 81?
They are, they are. I mean, I, I still hear from them that we need to do something at that intersection. I'm routinely in the morning coming in on that intersection. There is, you know, a substantial, there's a substantial backup there in the mornings. So I think we need to look at it, understand, understand the volumes and get some recommendations on what, what options might look like. I don't, you know, I don't know that it's going to take all of that 45,000, might take half of that, but this is a number, it's a number I plugged in there to engage somebody to help us look at that and understand what our options are if it's needed. But based on, based on the feedback I get, I think Cory and I have had some conversation as well. I think we need to look at it, but if you guys.
I think it'd be best if maybe Cory and I were in that conversation before we spend the money. We're not necessarily hearing the same thing then from, from our neighborhood. And like he said, I think the object is to not have as much truck traffic going down that road, especially since the bean plant's down there now, it's kind of increased, like we've all seen that. And of course, the speed of trucks going down Victory Road. I, I don't know what the right answer is, but I don't necessarily know that we need to spend money to look at putting in a roundabout or something like that quite yet. I, I think it'd be best for us to have a discussion.
Okay. And so we can, I'm, I'm fine leaving that, we can, we can kind of take the next year and, and visit about that more as staff and council and, and.
Yeah, maybe it's even a community involvement discussion that we could have some community members.
So we'll leave that, we'll just leave that zero then, I won't, I won't bring anything over for that.
Steve, if that 400,000 is not used, have we, have we looked for lighting? Have we looked at, I know some citizens have voiced concerns about the lighting coming off the numbered streets. You know, second, third, fourth through town, running north and south off of Pazwalk. Have we ever looked at those streets for lighting?
We have, not to my knowledge, we haven't. You know, we can't engage, we can't engage with NPPD in, in light studies. We have some technology to go out there and, and look at candle watts during the night and see what kind of light we're getting in those areas. And NPPD will do that for us as well.
I think it's perfect timing to do that while we're negotiating these agreements. To look into that, so.
Okay.
Thanks. One more I got here, industrial road extension west of 81. Who's all partnering with, with, with the expansion of this?
Currently, this is the county and us. It, it's really a, it's really a, it's, the whole section's in the county, so it's county-driven. We, I would say we as a city were the ones that bent the year, especially after, kind of as, as the crush facility was going in and the anticipation of all those additional trucks coming through town on Highway 81. We already know we've got a lot of bypass traffic going on over on 37th. So we, we suggested that it was time to, to look at a corridor and maybe preserve a corridor for that, for that extension.
We could preserve Victory Road if we moved them on to 35, too. Truck traffic on to 35 and get them off Victory Road.
But we, yeah, just the county and us right now.
Steve, are we closed up on the, on, on Benjamin? I know it's been a while since we, we've done Benjamin, but I don't know that I ever saw a final.
Final change order.
Whether it's looking at damage.
Final change order will be on the subcommittee agenda for Monday.
For Monday? Oh, I was a little early, huh? I guess so. While, while you're talking about it, I thought of it, I just never remembered seeing anything that was related to it. So we'll be done after Monday?
Well, there's one, there's, there's one P, one tiny piece left as part of that project. Obviously, we closed Square Turn, so we need to vacate Square Turn.
Was, was there on, on the striping, I, I was thinking that was supposed to be ground down and put in there, but it looks like it's just painted on top and wearing off quickly.
Yeah, it is, I believe it was ground, I believe there was a, I believe it was ground in. I'd have to go back out there and look, but it's a polyurethane.
Maybe some of it, but I don't know that all of it is.
I know it's, it's a, I'm pretty sure we shot polyurethane on that, which is generally ground in. There's another one, there's, there's thermoplastic. It's a deeper grind, but it's a thick, it's a much thicker paint, but we can look at it and, and see there.
I'd say maybe check it out before that comes in front of us.
Steve, the closure there on Phillips Street and that, is that pretty much going to happen, do you think, this next year? The reason I ask is, because I, I know I'm on the Railroad Transportation Safety District, and they were going to do some out, you know, in their budget, they'll do some allocation for
And I, and I think.
Arms and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think, I think they do. I think Dick had put like, I don't know, three and a quarter, 340 into their budget for some arms, but so I, I, you know, is it? There's obviously going to be some engineering and some expense before we actually start the construction on that. I would say that we'll, we need to make a decision as to whether or not, you know, the council's fully on board with that and the community's on board with that, and start moving that forward. I know there's a, a large desire to have that, have that done.
But will the construction expenditure occur next year?
It could, depends on how, you know, if we really giddy up here this fall and, and get all, get everybody on board and the railroad safety district on board and get the plans done. I, I think that could, it could be under contract for construction in this next fiscal year.
Okay.
Other questions?
Need just a question for Steve. Any members of the public who have any questions, please come forward now.
Jim McKenzie, just a question about the inter-fund transfer out of CHAF to general, to 415,000 dollars. So would, does that money goes to regular street budget? Does that pay for specific projects? Does it pay for salaries and materials? Does it, my question is that, is that again helping us balance our budget? Because that goes into our street budget, and that's the last general funds we have to put in there.
I would say it, just from a large perspective, large look at that, Jim, the street budget itself is about three, three, three and a half, what, three and a half, 3.8 million? I, I think it's pretty easy to say that that 415,000 dollar transfer to general revenue is, is being consumed through the street budget.
Okay, so by us increasing it by 250,000 dollars this year, it helps to reduce the general fund contribution to our street budget?
Well, it gets us back to historically what we've put in there every year since at least 2002.
Yeah, I know the last, looks like the last couple of years, we were only doing 240 and, excuse me, 165 and then 240 a few years back.
So last, last year, last year, we had reduced it in anticipation of doing that 5 million dollar bond. And that was going to be partially how we paid. So to pay that, that 5 million dollar community decided street repair was going to be paid for by reducing that transfer to the general fund. And then the other 200,000 dollars in council priority. So that's how that 5 million dollar bond was going to be paid. Since we're not moving that bond forward, we're, we're moving back to the 415,000 dollars, which is just, that's just, that's been the historical number.
I see in 2021, 22, or 240,000.
Going back to at least 2002, it, it's to, it's, those dollars go directly to fund the street department.
Okay, I mean, I see in 21, 22, we were at 240,000, we went 415, we went 165, so.
And I could, and I'd be, I'd be happy to go get the actual specifics on those. I know the one year when we dropped to 165, I believe that was some funding, a little bit of funding for finishing design on, I think it was Madison Avenue. We were trying to get that, or Michigan Avenue. So it was some funding to help. I remember some citizens coming in saying, hey, we've been waiting for phase two here on Michigan for 10 years, when are we going to get it going? So we, we shifted, we reduced that transfer and, and so we could put that under, get the design moving and get that, get that done.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out all the pieces that help us make our budget look better this year.
Sure.
The other question I had was, because when you take 415,000 dollars out of CHAF, that's that much less than street repair you can do. When you, when we start paying principal on the bonds, you said that's probably two years out. Do you know how much that's going to be on an annual basis?
I do, in, right now. So the total on that is, looks like it's fiscal year 28 is when we start paying principal and interest. The total is, looks like 1 million, 1,885,000 is about the total, principal and interest. In first year, in fiscal year 28, 1,45,000 in principal, 737,581 in interest.
Okay, so when we get to that point, we'll have a little over a million less per year to spend on streets?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and, and when you look at our 10-year capital improvement, our, our 10-year CIP, you'll see out for the next 10 years what we're anticipating doing within our, within, within that capital budget.
Yeah, we know we have big needs, I'm just trying to figure out where that's, but thank you.
Two little minor things that I thought of when, when you were talking there. One, I sent an email about that Bonita Drive light, and I know it's minor, putting a street light out there like there is at every intersection as we go south.
Oh, Bonita? And both, and I've, I've been out there and looked at it, at it as has NPPD. It, it might, I'm not going to say it's, it's going to be difficult and then take us a long time to do, but because of what it is, I think we need to make sure, I think we need to light that entire intersection better, not just put a light on Bonita, but we might need to put a light out there on, on 81 or a couple lights.
Exactly, that's what I was going with. So I wanted to make sure that you thought about that in the budget. And the other one was kind of a small, minor budget cost, but David Janzma brought up about signs on the arrows. You know, obviously, the state put up plenty of lighting that has those yellow arrows, and if we're able to put signs up on those streetlights.
We can, the state, the state doesn't put those signs up, they.
Right.
They, they'd look at us if we want to add any signage to that. I don't personally have a problem with that. I, I like communities that put arrow signs up on, 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 to supplement.
I think it's a decent idea, and maybe we could see what Grand, I think he brought up Grand Island had those, but maybe.
Well, I think we have it on Riverside now.
And have it in our budget for, I mean, it can't be that much to have a few signs.
No, they're not, we, we would be able to absorb that one in our streets.
Well, we put it on, there's a sign on Riverside telling you the same thing.
Well, one out of 40 isn't bad.
But that was, that was city-funded Riverside and Benjamin. But state-funded high, lights do not have them on, no.
Yeah.
Let's just, be in there, too. And I know it's a small cost.
I think we can find an opportunity, I know Anna's working on, trying to create an opportunity to get together and have a comprehensive conversation on, you know, some pedestrian signal issues, some, some crosswalks. You know, there's several things in there, we can add, kind of add that for. you know, some pedestrian signal issues, some, some crosswalks, um, you know, there's several things in there. We can add, kinda add that for a comprehensive conversation. Street, street safe, it's kinda street safety related.
I guess I was gonna bring up pedestrian traffic on, or crossings on, on maybe some roundabouts and especially the one on, uh, Victory Road and Norfolk Avenue. That's got a lot of, I, I don't know if you've taken any calls over it, but I, I've had email correspondence and, and phone calls as well about the traffic that goes through there, especially coming from the north and the south with the truck traffic not slowing down for, for the pedestrians. So the pedestrians are watching out for the vehicles. Um, I know that wasn't part of the CHAF conversation, but it's, it's gonna be in the conversation. Now it's time to bring it up.
And I, and I, and that's, you know, I think that, I would look at that, that, uh, that seventy-five thousand we had budget in there for, for pedestrian crossings. Um, you know, we can, we can use that to address that. Anna and I have had some conversations relative to your, your inquiry on that. Um, I think, uh, just off the top of my head, I, um, from a roundabout perspective, one of our closer neighbors, Minnesota is very, very proactive on pedestrian signage within their roundabouts. I think they do a really good job and we have, um, looked at a couple of their, their newer roundabout installations and the signage they've got going on there. I know the street department just earlier this week did, did, um, top off the crosswalks and add, I think added crosswalk painting in that, in that roundabout. So that's, I mean, I, just driving through there myself, I, I noticed that right away. Um, so, yeah, I, I think we can accomplish that with some budget numbers here.
All right, thanks, Steve. Any other additional questions?
I'm just gonna make a comment, not so much a question, but just the, you know, the beautification, uh, that we're looking at too on some of these highways actually are gonna include some safety and some crosswalks, so it's not.
Yeah, and that three hundred and twenty-eight dollars that we have identified there, you know, we would supplement that with some of these other pedestrian dollars in here out of, out of CHAF to accomplish that. We're not gonna spend, I just want the public to know, we're not gonna spend beautification dollars on pedestrian signals, but we would, we would combine that all together.
Right. Any other comments or questions, Steve? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item number thirteen, presentation of the water budget. Chad, you'll be leading that. Page ninety, if you're following along.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We'll start off with a little bit of the revenue on the front end of the water budget here. So the beginning balance, we're forecasting twelve million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. For total, total water charges there, we're, we're showing a four million, one hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars. That's an increase of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in the water user fees. And this is related to an increase in usage and also a proposed six point five percent water rate increase. In total rent and other income, we, uh, we're showing a proposed balance of ninety-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, and that's a six thousand, eight hundred dollar increase. And this here's your rent on the farmland, the solar, solar farm, and then also the communication tower. In total, in, 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 oh, excuse me, total interest income, we have an increase of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. And this is related because of, uh, current interest rates and, uh, our current fund balance. Proceeds of debt, we're showing three point eight million dollars. Um, this here is to continue the West Water Treatment Plant improvement projects that we have going on with the two million gallon tank, well fourteen, and then also the west plant improvement. So total revenue, we have a proposed balance of eight million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Any questions on that portion of it?
With the increase in interest, with the interest rates of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, is the rate increase is necessary with, with, in, in, income off interest?
So with the water rates, one thing I always keep in mind, um, with being an enterprise fund, we have a lot of costs that go up during the year. So we get nothing back from, from taxes, so, so we're a completely independent budget. So our budget comes from the sale of water. So with that, we have electrical costs increased, which we all see the NPPD's got a roughly three percent increase that they're forecasting. I got chemical costs increases and then also personnel increases and operation increases. Um, water meters, that's one of the biggest ones you'll see later as we get into our, the, the maintenance budget here. Water meters go up every single year. Brass is very, very expensive and, and they continue to go up. So out of that six and a half percent increase, we show, Stephen, I've been modeling this for the last couple of years, about a three and a half percent increase on just our operation side. So, so that, that little bit of interest area, that two thirty-three, um, our balance is gonna go down next year. We're not gonna have that available balance in that, in that account, so our interest rate will go down the following year. So, so when we model our interest rate, or excuse me, our, our water rate, we're forecasting that out for a few, five, six years out. So, so the six and a half percent increase is gonna help for future projects also. So we're trying to build up a little bit more revenue, help pay for water districts and stuff like that for the revenue fund. And, you know, we've got, look in the CIP there, we've got a water tank that's forecasted out there about five, six, seven years down the road and another improvements there. So, so that's why we wanna kinda keep that six and a half percent increase in there is, again, for, about that three and a half percent is for our continued operation and then the other parts for the CIP.
Okay.
Anything else before we get into the meat and potatoes of it? All right, we'll, uh, jump right into the maintenance portion of it. And, uh, stop me if you have any questions as we go, cause there's, there's a lot in here and stuff. Um, we'll just go ahead and start right up there with the, uh, total personnel costs. We're showing a proposed budget of one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So an overall increase of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. And as you see in line number eleven, we have an increase of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for salaries. And this is related to mayor raises, um, compen- compensation study that we seen. Line thirteen, you'll see that we have a, a pretty substantial decrease there of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. And this is related to, with my new staff that we've been hiring over the last couple of years, I've got a lot of single employees, so they've elected to take the single insurance and not the family insurance. So, so that's why you see a pretty substantial decrease there. And then, uh, line fourteen in the pension, you show an increase of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that's related to the city's proposal of moving up to a nine percent match. In the total operating supplies and materials, the proposed budget has a balance of thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, so an overall increase of eighteen, eighteen. Other operation costs, proposed budget has eleven thousand, two hundred dollars, which has an increase of three hundred and eighty dollars. Total utility and maintenance proposed budget is one million, sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. So an overall increase of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. And as we break into there, I'll show some, some reasons for that. Line forty-four, again, as I was saying before, we have an increased proposal on electrical costs, so we have an increase of six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Line forty-six, in the building grounds and maintenance, we're showing a balance of eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. And a lot of these are some, some new items we have going on out there for, for maintenance portions. Um, you'll see that we have a, the West Water Treatment Plant, we got a sprinkler install, that's showing twenty thousand dollars for that. Also at the west plant, we've got, uh, the chlorine injectors upgrades. So we're gonna replace the current chlorine injectors we got there for thirty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna replace a drive on transfer pump three of twenty-five thousand. We got the, the second part of our fiber conversion at the west plant for our rate, for our wells communicating back to the West Water Treatment Plant of ninety-five thousand. At the east plant, we're looking at installing a drive on high service one at the east water treatment plant due to the, to the age. And what was that one? I didn't put it on my notes. Twenty-five thousand, I believe, is on that one. And then also you'll see well fourteen, the power, overhead power install, and that one there is sixty-five thousand. Then on line forty-eight, increase in office equipment maintenance, we've got ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollar increase on that. And the two big items in there is, uh, we've got the project construction management software of six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then a CIP software of three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, in total, total other administration and overhead, proposed budget has a balance of eight hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So an overall decrease of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy, ninety-seven dollars. There's an increase in insurance on line sixty-one of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. Increase in, uh, postage of thirty-four hundred dollars. Increase in line sixty-four for office supplies of ten thousand, five hundred dollars. And two items in there that, that triggered that was a replacement of a computer for my service department. We are moving away from the tablets. We're going to a more rugged computer system that can withstand being dropped and stuff like that. It streamlines communication back and forth with our, our secretary and the service guy, cause they can do tickets online now. And that's four thousand dollars for that computer. And then, uh, we're gonna upgrade the, uh, printer we have at the West Water Treatment Plant. It's been a headache for the last year of sixty-five hundred. Line sixty-eight has a decrease in professional fees of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So we have an administration fee that we send money or funds from the water department into the administration fee to help pay for the administration staff and assisting the water department. That is an increase of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And then the bond issuance cost of fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is an actual decrease of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars from the previous year. In government subside and transfers, proposed balance of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, and this here is an increase of forty-six thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. Then capital outlay, propos- proposed budget of eight million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is an overall decrease of the previous year of five million, eight hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Line eighty-two, we have a decrease of sixty thousand dollars. And then also we, we have in that balance right now, we got the relocation of the water shop from, from down at the Ninth Street out to the West Water Treatment Plant of two hundred and ninety thousand. And then we also have, uh, replaced the overhead fiber on Thirteenth and Benjamin, the Twenty-Fifth and Benjamin of a hundred and fifty thousand for that, that fund there. Line eighty-four, we have an increase in machinery and equipment of eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. And this is mainly due to our excavator. Um, our excavator was, is a, is a two thousand and six unit. And this is a cost share between water and sewer to replace that, and that cost is a hundred and six thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. In line eighty-nine, uh, overall piping, we, we carry a hundred thousand dollars for anything that goes over eight inches uh, for water mains. The city picks up that cost in, in development areas. West Water Treatment Improvement Project of two point five million. Uh, we'll have a little bit left over in the two million gallon tank of five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. West Water Collector Well, that project will finish up next summer and we're showing roughly four million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars to finish that. Uh, one project that we have shown in our master plan that's recommended is to extend the water main on Omaha Avenue to go underneath the flood control over on Victory Road. That's two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars for that. And then, uh, we're paying off the assessment on Water District's one twenty-four in the amount of one fifty-three, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the total, uh, proposed budget for debt services is, uh, one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and, or eight hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. So our total expenditures in this budget is thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. Oh, thirteen million, sorry, sorry. So with the total expenditures and our total revenue, we're showing an ending balance in the water department of seven million, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, or eighty-eight thousand, five hundred, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Excuse me, got tongue tied a little bit. A lot of numbers, a lot of numbers. So, any questions? I know I went through that pretty quick, but.
Chad, can you talk a little bit about that, um, relocation on the service shop?
Service shop, okay. Uh, this is one that we had in the previous year's budget. We just didn't get it completed because of the project we have going on at the West Water Treatment Plant with the two million gallon tank. So what I'd like to do is move my service department that's down at the street division out to the West Water Treatment Plant. I feel that's a, a, a good move just by basically in communication with my staff. We can do some cross-training. We got some service guys that wanna learn a little bit of the plant operation. That's an opportunity to do that. Um, I, I just feel it's a better way to communicate with the guys and be able to see the guys on a daily basis.
Okay.
Anything else?
Chad?
Yes.
The certification, so you got, uh, four utility workers, a plant operator, three plant operators. So essentially you're running it with eight, nine guys, eight guys, gals. How many of them have the certifications needed to run the plant?
We all do.
You all do?
We all do. So per the state of Nebraska, you have to have a minimum of a grade four operator license to do anything on the water system. Rather be in the service department or out there at the plant, same license across the board. So all of our guys have that minimum license, so.
Any additional questions for Chad? Uh, anybody in the public have any questions for Chad? Please come forward.
Jim McKenzie, just a question on the, the user fees, um, the six point five percent increase, that we were six and a quarter last year. Probably thirteen, fourteen percent when you compound those over two years, which far exceeds the rate of inflation. Um, just wondering how many more years you intend to increase by that amount and then have we done any realistic reason, recent studies how we compare to other cities our size in the state of Nebraska?
Yes, Jim, um, we do model everything and right now our model is forecasting that this will probably be the last year of the six and a half percent rate increase. We're hoping that the following year, next year will go maybe possibly a five percent and then back down to four percent. And, and we do compare our water rates and stuff with other communities. And right now with this proposal that we have in for, and before you, we're right in the middle with everybody else. And just to kinda put it in relationship of what the six and a half percent rate increase is, on a minimum water bill, just the water, not talking sewer, but just the water, and the minimum bill I'm looking at is a five eighths meter. So we're looking at ninety-six cents every two months on that bill for that six and a half percent.
Any additional questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item fourteen, presentation of the sewer revenue budget. Page one oh seven.
All right.
I see.
Okay, I'll try to slow down a little bit there. I got going down the hill, so I got a little tongue tied, so. All right, so we'll start with sewer revenue here. So on the sewer revenue, we're showing a big, beginning balance of eleven million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars. So with our, uh, intergovernmental revenue, the proposed budget has a balance of five hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is a decrease of two million, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, eight hundred and thirty, sixty-six dollars. And this is mainly what's left over for the flood wall grant that we have at the wastewater treatment plant that the project's working on right now. So total sewer charges, the proposed budget has a balance of six million, eighty-eight thousand dollars. This does reflect a six and a half percent rate increase on sewer. However, you don't see an increase on the budget right now, primary because we have a, uh, some industrial users here that have changed their treatment process in which we don't know what that balance is gonna be, if, how it's gonna offset each other. So, so that's the reason why we don't really have a dollar amount in there at this particular time. On total rent and other income, we have a proposed balance, a budget of forty-five hundred dollars, which is no change from the previous year. Interest income, uh, the balance of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. And again, that's based on the current interest rates in the market and then our, our fund balance that we have currently right now. So, uh, proposed debt, budget for debt is two million, six hundred and twenty. So, proposed debt budget for debt is two million six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is a decrease of nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the previous budget. Total revenue, we're showing nine million five hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is a decrease of three million three hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars from the previous year. And a lot of that's related to the ongoing projects at the wastewater, or the wastewater plant. Total expenditures between the wastewater plant and the sewer maintenance, proposed budget of thirteen, thirteen million seven, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-six, ninety-three cents. I tell you, a lot of numbers, a lot of numbers.
It's a long day.
Giving us an ending balance of seven million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the sewer fund.
Any other questions for Chad? Anybody from the public have any questions?
Okay. We'll jump into sewer maintenance and I'll make sure Rob can do his, I know he's eager to do it. So, on total personnel costs for the sewer maintenance, we're showing a balance of four hundred, is that right? Might have the wrong page here, hold one second.
One eleven, right?
Yeah. Okay. So, we're showing a proposed budget of four hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars for the total personnel cost. Line eleven, we're showing an increase of eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars in salaries. Line thirteen, we're showing a decrease of fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars in the group insurance. And line fourteen, pension, we're showing an increase of six hundred, or excuse me, six thousand eighty-five dollars. In total operating supplies and materials, the proposed budget has a balance of thirty-five thousand four hundred and one dollars, which is a decrease of four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Total utility and maintenance, proposed budget has a balance of, budget of two hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is an increase of nineteen thousand five hundred and ten dollars. And a couple of those items in that budget I want to reflect on was line forty-one, which is an increase in electricity of six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Line forty, forty, forty-six, which is an increase of eight thousand six hundred and one dollars, and that's in the building ground and maintenance. And line forty-eight, office equipment, increase of ten thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And those two items, again, are the project construction management software of six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and the CIP software of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. In total administration and overhead, our proposed budget has a balance of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is a decrease of two hundred and ninety-four dollars. A couple items highlighted in there is an increase in line sixty-one, increase in insurance of one thousand seven hundred and six dollars. And line sixty-four, decrease in office supplies of two thousand. In government subsidies and transfers, proposed balance of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is an increase of forty-six thousand five hundred and nine dollars. And that's for the transfer to economic development. In total capital outlay, we have a balance, proposed budget of five hundred and ninety-five thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And a couple of things to highlight in there is line eighty-four, we have an increase in machinery and equipment of a hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. The biggest one on that is our service truck. I have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget for a service truck. And this particular service truck is going to be a one-ton truck with an auto crane on the side. Currently, right now, our auto crane that we use to pull motors out of the lift stations was a nineteen eighty-three model. We can't get any parts for this anymore, and it's time to upgrade. It's shown its age. It's pretty, it's pretty aged. This particular truck will both serve useful for pulling the lift stations out in a safe manner, and then we can also use it on repairs of hydrants and stuff on that sort also. So, that's that truck for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We also got the excavator in there for a hundred and six thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then asset management software of fifteen thousand. In line eighty-nine, we have the oversized sewer pipe of eight inches, a hundred thousand dollars in there. And then I also, you'll probably start seeing this over the next six, seven years on our CIP, or, excuse me, in our budget. This is to start doing some improvements to our existing lift stations. So, I got a hundred and ten thousand dollars in there to start upgrading and doing some repairs on the current stations we have. Some of these stations are, best way to say, they're still holding together with baling wire and duct tape. So, it's time to upgrade them. And then we also have the Sewer District one forty-seven assessment payoff of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Our debt services, we're showing a balance or a budget of six hundred and four thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And then so, for our overall sewer maintenance expenditures, two million three hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Any questions on that?
Chad, your group insurance is down by fourteen thousand, almost fifteen. Could you explain that?
Yes. Again, just like the water fund, I've got quite a few single individuals that have recently came onboard, so we don't have the family insurance premiums that we're paying for. So, overall, it's kind of interesting. Overall, between the water and the sewer side, I've got fourteen employees and only three of us have family insurance.
So, what makes the big change? I mean, from, did you have some people retire?
We had a lot of retirement. We had some retirement, and then we had some transfers, you know. For a while there, we were kind of the stepping stone. Everybody came onboard and then went to, I got robbed. I trained them too well.
Thank you.
Yep.
He's sitting behind me. I've got one question on eighty-nine.
Yeah.
When you were talking about your lift station improvements.
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question is, are, what is on the radar for the two seventy-five improvements for the lift stations instead of where they are on Victory Road?
So, that station right now, I believe we have that in twenty-six, twenty-seven in the CIP.
It is, um...
I was thinking it was twenty-six, twenty-seven, or it could be twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
So, this hundred, so this hundred and ten thousand would be allocated to others instead of particularly this one?
Correct. That is correct.
That's fine. That was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got thirteen other lift stations there that, some of them are newer than others, so they won't have the need to do it. But we've got some that it's time to replace the pumps and upgrade the control systems and stuff, so...
Why don't you, did I see you bypass the CIP?
I went up there quick to see if we needed it, but I can go back there quick.
You bring the CIP down relative, I think it's probably good, maybe, and we probably touched on it as a function of the CIP, but it was asked here where that's at. It's actually in fiscal, fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and that can be shifted forward or backward. It's really a holding place out there, but as...
A little higher.
There you go. It'd be towards the top of the CIP.
Seventy-five?
Yeah. So, I just want to, as people are looking at this budget, as people look at the CIP, I want to draw attention to, zoom, or just slide over there so I can see. When you, no, go back the other way. So, when you, line items four and seven, you'll see that there's no dollars associated with line item four or seven anymore. Four or seven represent, number four is the phase-two upgrade to the, what we call the two seventy-five lift station, which sits over, oh, it takes everything that, everything east of the levee goes to that lift station, and it gets pumped, pumped underneath the levee and over to the west side of the levee. As a function of doing that, when we do, if we were to do that, it would require a new, replacing the thirty-six inch sewer line that runs from Bluff all the way down to Chestnut. That additional, you know, obviously, we would only do that two seventy-five lift station improvement, assuming that we're going to leave it in the ground for the next twenty years or so, thirty years, as the east side continues to grow. Well, between those two projects, those two projects add up to about five million dollars. Based on, you know, the desire to get that lift, a more permanent, a more permanent lift station in place, and get rid of that one there on two seventy, or on Highway thirty five, and then also anticipate additional industrial growth up in that northeast corner. We've eliminated those two lines. They just didn't make any sense. Why put five million dollars in the ground that really doesn't eliminate the need for the two, what we call the Omaha Lift Station, which is currently ten million? So, we have taken that five million out of the budget. That's why four and seven are zeros. You see nothing there. And we're totally focused now on the Omaha Lift Station. If, if as a function of development, we need to move that forward, we can move that forward. If we see some, some development go on over there, and we can capture some other funds here, whether those other funds are funds coming off of a TIF project, funds coming in from industrial capital contribution, whatever those other funds are, that's fifty percent of the project is kind of what we have plugged in there. So, fifty percent other funds, fifty percent revenue bond, and we don't need to put that other five million of infrastructure in the ground. Just pointing that out.
Other questions, accountants?
Public, any questions for us here? Please come forward.
Jim McKenzie, so I don't understand why we wouldn't project the user fees with the percentage increases. Why isn't that projected?
We do, we do, Jim. We use a water model called water, water, we project those out for ten years.
No, I mean, in your budget, there's no increase in user fees here, even though you've got an increase.
So, we have a lot going on with one industrial user right now, and we're not exactly sure what some changes in their operation are going to do in terms of their water volume. Their water volume, I can't remember what our water volume is at the flat. Their water volume running around six hundred thousand gallons a day, could be seven hundred, could be five hundred. But just to be a little bit conservative in our model, in our budget, we're modeling the same dollars this year going into this year and then next year. The other reason for that is this year has been an extremely wet summer. We are not selling water to people irrigating their yards, and that's probably bad. By the end of this summer, if this continues, that could be a three to four hundred thousand dollar hit in the water.
But this is sewer. This is sewer fees.
Oh, I'm sorry, sewer. So, I'll switch gears, mainly here. Thanks for pointing that out. So, going back to our industrial user, they have recently added, added some pre-treatment on site. We're not exactly sure how that pre-treatment again is going to impact our flow from that, from that industry. And so, we need to be conservative in our, in our model until, until that stabilizes and we can see what's going on. So, it's just, we don't want to be upside down on that sewer revenue model. Long-term, as we look long-term, there's, and so as we talk about, between this one and WPC, and I'll get in there a little bit, we are looking at, I believe, an eight percent increase, is that right? Eight percent, Rob? Eight percent increase in sewer fees this year, but that does step down and then step down again, and we forecast long-term being right in that, that four percent, you know, three point nine five percent is our twenty-five-year average. We anticipate being back at that, and we're forecasted to be at that long-term.
So, just trying to make sure I understand. So, we're going to increase residential fees by, I'm not finding it here, five percent? Is that right? So, his, no, six, six and a half percent. Residential's going up by six and a half.
Six and a half, not eight.
Industrial's going up by six and a half percent.
Yes.
So, if I'm reading between the lines, residential, we will have an increase in fees from residential, we have to, but you're anticipating a decrease then in, in fees from commercial to offset the increase in residential?
Not anticipating a decrease, I'm anticipating sort of a flat level, or, yes, potentially a decrease in fees from, from industry if that industry slows down, yes.
So, that's why you budgeted level for the year?
So, budgeting level for the year, yeah. The last couple of years, we've budgeted in, for fiscal year twenty-three, we increased industrial rates by eight percent. We increased residential rates by three and a half. Fiscal year twenty-four, we increased res, industrial rates by eight percent and residents three, three and a half percent. And this year, that was about catching our, catching our industrial rates up. This year, we're looking at a, you know, that was six and a half, six and a half percent both residential and industrial.
Okay. And then just again, on percentage increases over time, and, you know, I know Chad used the example of ninety-five cents on water, but I'm just going to go back to my water bill. I mean, if I have a two hundred and thirty dollar water bill and sixty of it is sewer, and so a hundred and, a hundred and seventy of it is, is water, and I got a thirteen percent increase over two years, thirteen percent times a hundred and seventy is twenty-two bucks or something like that. So, I'm not sure where the ninety-five cents comes from, but, I mean, it's...
Ninety-five cents is on a five-eighths meter minimum usage.
Yeah. So, I'm talking about real life. People, people who are watering their lawn...
Those are the ones that what you call me is the ones that have a fixed income, which are usually your minimum users.
Yeah. But I mean, I hear other people are saying, gosh, my water bill just keeps going up forever. So, anyway, I just wanted to, the ninety-five cents, maybe that's the minimum, but a lot of people when they're watering their lawn, it's a lot more than that, so...
Right. And so, to answer your other question, do we look at studies? So, yes, I think it was going into the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four increases. We had done, we had looked at, you know, what we call our five sister cities, Fremont, Carney, Hastings, Columbus. We forecasted our, our rate increases, I believe we forecasted them at six and a half percent or six and a quarter percent as we looked at that study. And that kept us in the middle of those groups. And that was without knowing what they were anticipating on doing for increases. So, holding them flat for three years and increasing us at six and a quarter, we still stayed right in the middle of that group of. And we looked at usage weight from all the way down, at the very bottom range of, I've got three hundred cubic feet per month, all the way up to three thousand cubic feet per month. And in each one of those ranges, actually, the first four, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, three, yeah, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred cubic feet per month, we were actually second low in that group. As we went to the next level, the seven hundred and fifty, one thousand, two thousand, three thousand cubic feet per month, we were right smack in the middle. And again, forecasting three years of increase without knowing what the other communities were doing, we stayed in the middle of the pack, even with our compounded eighteen, eighteen and a half percent over that time, we stayed right in the middle.
Okay.
So, we do look at that. It's, it's not, it gives you a little bit of an idea. Our plants are similar, but our plants are different. We treat different, we're in different, different, you know, sort of different aquifers, different processes. And so, our, you kind of have to look at the treatment process itself and what we're doing, but it's still, I think it gives, it gives us an idea where we are across our sister communities.
Okay.
Our class one sisters.
Any other questions? Any additional questions here? All right, we'll move on to the presentation of water pollution control. All right. Move on to the presentation of water pollution control budget, WPC. Rob will be doing that.
I'll be doing it.
All right.
Mayor Consul, I'll try to make this as fast as I can, because I know we all got places to go and things to do. So, first of all, I'd kind of like to talk about our expenditures. I'm just gonna read off this, I'll follow along. So, we are at, this year, at eleven million, three hundred and eighty-three, one hundred and four. Down from thirteen thou, or thirteen million, seventy-one, seven hundred and eighteen, for a deduct of one million, six hundred and eighty-eight, seven hundred and fourteen dollars, twelve percent, almost thirteen percent. I'm gonna talk about real quick, a lot of this is about our capital projects that we have going on out there. But first of all, I'll talk about just significant changes in our other categories. Operating supplies and materials, we have a decrease of five hundred and eighteen dollars or point two, one percent due to increase in fuel, which is offset partially to the increase of uniforms. All my guys have to have uniforms out there. Nobody wants to take that home with them. Other operating costs is increase of fifteen hundred dollars or one point zero nine due to increase in garbage fees. We haul a lot of stuff. Our grease and stuff goes up to the tipping floor, so there's a little increase there. Utilities and maintenance costs is a decrease of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two or two point nine two percent due to increases in electrical and office equipment maintenance costs, which are partially offset by decreasing building and grounds and plant maintenance costs. Legislative affairs, increase one hundred and eighty-six dollars or one point zero three percent due to increases in travel, training dues, publications. Other administration and overhead costs, increase twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars or three point two two percent. This is an increase in insurance. Postage, we have a large, we're shipping out a lot more samples now, so our postage went up quite a bit for shipping and office supplies, which is partially offset by a decrease in other professional fees. Then we'll talk about capital expenditures, and then we'll talk about some other things we kind of have going on out there. This year, capital outlay is budgeted at seven point, or seven million, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. Excuse me. I'm not used to big numbers like this. Seven million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars and twenty-five dollars compared to nine million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars the prior year. The following building and improvement items include, this year, our sludge island building rooftop heater units for fifteen thousand. Replacement of steel for our, our maintenance shop of a hundred thousand. HVAC units replacement for eighteen thousand. The grit removal building, we're already into building that. So, this is gonna be the second half of that. It'd be four million, two hundred and forty-two thousand. Preliminary design of industrial pretreatment for three hundred and fifty thousand. Land purchase for two hundred and fifty thousand. And WPC planet expansion preliminary design for six hundred and fifty thousand. The following machinery, and these items we usually have on it. This is just things that we constantly replacing. Fifteen thousand for progressive cavity pump. Ten thousand for primary sludge pump. And replacement of thickener def pumps for fifteen thousand. Raw lift pump, twenty-eight thousand, kind of et cetera there. So, as we kind of go on down, there is some new things that have been added. We'll have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for replacement of our blender for our sludge handling. This is stainless steel right now. That unit is about thirty years old. The new one will be stainless, and it'll actually give us a standby one. We have to press. We can't hold that, so it'll give us some good redundancy there. And then, the last part that I have is, we will be starting our flood wall and effluent pumping system next month at one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. Like Chad, I also have asset management, fifteen thousand. And this leaves me at, also with debt service of an increase of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-five or fifty-two point three five due to the twenty twenty-six bond issue for the grant, for the grit removal building and capital projects. Another piece that's kind of come up in the last week or two, so this budget's gonna change for our next one meeting. We had our sixteen inch line that feeds our air to our SBRs, our sequence batch reactor. Vital piece for our operation, actually had a, a leak in it. We were able to patch it. We found more leaks in it. It is thirty years old. It was in our CIP for, I believe, twenty-seven, twenty-eight to do, two hundred thousand dollars. We were able to patch the leak that we had, but we still have some, some issues going there, so we're gonna try to move that forward. I'm waiting for engineer estimates for the cost of replacing this line. And then, there's gonna, hopefully, for your consideration, some, adding some staff out there as well and kind of doing some key positioning of my people out there, so we can get some relief from some of the things that are going on out there. So, we'll have that kind of put together. We just kind of worked on this, this week with Jessica. We'll have that for your next budget. So, questions for me on all this?
How many total do you have out there? Just trying to scroll down to.
I believe we are at ten right now. We would like to add one more personnel.
What would that position be?
It'd be an operator two to maybe an operator three. We don't have a lot of what I want to call top technical. You know, somebody that has that background in electrical, mechanical, and that kind of stuff. So, we're kind of looking, these people are hard to find, hard to get people working a wastewater plant, hard to get people with certifications. We've been lucky, we have found some. As you can kind of see, we've added a chemical technician to two as well. So, with, again, with the industrial loading that we're doing, we're doing a lot more testing. We're running weekends doing testing. So, we now have two lab technicians. We were able to land a very top-notch lab technician. So, we need that redundancy there. Everything's based around what our lab tells us. So, again, we're just trying to cover, so we don't have so much overtime, so we don't have so much, you know, people not being able to take vacations. It's a pretty thin crew when you think about what we do every day out there. So, that's what we're trying to, that's our goal, I guess. Kind of some discussions, subcommittee, on this subject as well. That's kind of was helped driven some of that, which I appreciate very much.
We appreciate you. Thanks for what you do for us.
We run a pretty lean operation out there.
Additional questions? Anybody from public have any questions for Rob? All right, seeing none. We'll, we'll move on to, well, I'll tell you what, we're gonna take a little break. Five minutes here. We'll come back and hit items. The time is not what it's supposed to turn, about seven?
You should use this.
Keep thinking, under control. I don't know about when we took off. All right, let's start working our way back. Hate to bust up the party. Pace we're on, we're looking at six o'clock. Okay. Move on to item seventeen. We're gonna start with the presentation of solid waste management budget. Rob's gonna do that.
I already signed that.
I will track along with that.
I think we're starting on page one thirty-four.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Do a quick and wait for all your questions. So, the personnel increases, like everybody else's, insurance, insurance is down, pensions up. So, ours is an increase of one point three two percent, and that includes cost of living. The other significant line items, it'd be easier to go down. The view, twenty-four, vehicle fuel and lube, it gone down because of the, the cost of fuel. The line twenty-six has gone down five thousand dollars. When we built the, our new building out there, we had increased that five thousand dollars, and now we're putting it back to where it was several years ago. Line item twenty-nine, other operating supplies. That is our household hazardous waste facility. That is a budget number for disposal of all our chemicals that we get in and other maintenance to the building. We raised that to eight thousand dollars, two thousand dollars more. The year before, we actually spent ten thousand. We have contracted with the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District, and they will reimburse us according to the, the number of people that we receive outside the city limits. So, everybody fills out a piece of paper, and about thirty-five percent of them are from outside the city of Norfolk. We submit the bill at the end of the year to them, and they will reimburse us for thirty-five percent. Line item thirty-one, rent. This is new. This is equipment rental for an excavator. Costs about fifty-five hundred dollars a month for when our boom breaks. Some of you may know, our boom is currently getting overhauled now, and we are renting a excavator. Line thirty-two, garbage fees, that's just a number that goes off of last fiscal year's waste that we received. So, it goes off of that tonnage. Last year's was up, and so, this year's is up. That's the number we grab. Line forty-six account, repair of hopper, you'll see in there. Last year, we had ten, this year, we have ten thousand. Next year, we have twenty. We didn't, we did not repair the hopper. It's getting worse. That money is being spent on the boom repair. Line forty-seven, machinery, we up the truck maintenance. All the costs are going up, so we up that twenty-five thousand dollars. Line forty-eight, you'll see, we have a zero there for software. We were using a work order system, and we have now migrated to one citywide one. So, this is our old one that we'd be getting rid of. Now, we go to the capital improvements. Line eighty-two, we have in there for a recycling building. That'll be a study or an engineering feat of fifty thousand dollars. And then, the concrete for driving, we had that in this year's budget, but that money's being used for the boom also. The boom had catastrophic failures. In our eighty-four account, we have in a trailer, a new trailer, a used roll-off truck. We use a roll-off truck. We have boxes down there to move all the grass and the brush off the bunker area. And we haul appliances to alters with it. We have a used excavator, hopefully, coming from the water department when they trade theirs off for backup for our boom. And the grapple for the loader, this has been an ongoing thing. I've been trying to buy a grapple fork for our payloader for the last five years, and have not had much luck on finding a decent one. We may go to Plan B next year and put one on the loader tractor. We also have an over-the-road truck, which is enterprise one.
Is that what that is?
IE. All right, what is that? That's a. Or what is that, that's a, is that the? Yeah, okay, so we have an over-the-road truck also to replace. We originally started this, we bought two trucks in twenty sixteen, and a u- and then an old, and an old used truck also that year. And so this will replace one of the old trucks as we keep moving forward. And then we also added engineering for the boom. This is a bring in a qualified engineer to come and say what equipment might be better, what we could do different. The boom has been a, the boom has been a sore thumb since nineteen ninety-five. That's when they, this is the second one we've had, and we've, the old one, we tore down every year and had it rebuilt. Uh, it's time to see what else we should be doing different. Answer any questions?
IEs for the improvement and extension account.
Thank you.
So thanks, Sheila.
Any more questions? Questions in public? Alright.
Thank you all.
That concludes the solid waste management budget, uh, moving on to the presentation of the stormwater utility budget. Steve's gonna do that.
Council Mayor. Stormwater utility budget. We are not, just to kinda start this out, we are not increasing fees in this fund, uh, this year. We've had them fairly stable for the last couple of years now. Projected beginning balance on the fund, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-one, anticipating some other, uh, other state funding or other funding, for, um, either grant-related construction, or, um, it would be related to, it's generally related to our, our, uh, wetland bank is what that's generally related to. Use fees projected again, three hundred and four, little over three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, and that is based on the two percent, or two dollars per meter for residential customers, and six dollars for commercial and industrial customers, that's where that revenue is generated from. Some small capital contribution, this is where in our subdivision agreements, we've, we rather than put some small, um, storm, storm detention facilities in some of these smaller residential areas, uh, we're allowing them to provide a capital contribution, and then we will apply that towards a larger regional detention facility. Uh, other interest income, ninety-one hundred dollars total. Uh, revenue budget for five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six, and total funds available nine, little over nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next page, again, just a breakdown of where the funding comes from. Moving on then to the expense, expense detail. This is where last year, because the, the staff person we have that oversees our stormwater division is, is partially funded through this and partially funded through engineering. Uh, last year, we had, had, um, moved some, moved that funding over to engineering. This year, uh, we've, we've moved that portion back over to this account. So you'll see it's all a hundred percent, a hundred percent increase. Uniforms, um, pretty small increase there, just kinda carrying, carrying forward the prior year's budget. You see estimated budget expenses this year, two hundred, or two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Uh, we budget just a hair over seven thousand dollars. Uh, the individual that's responsible for stormwater utilities, uh, because we've been short-staffed in engineering, has been picking up a little bit more time on the engineering side. Uh, but we anticipate there'll be more costs now associated with, um, with this, with this specific, uh, stormwater utility department over the, as we go forward. So that, I would anticipate the estimate, the expenses for this coming year to, um, be more reflective of what we're budgeting. Utilities and maintenance, uh, building ground plant maintenance, uh, you see, they're just budgeting back over what we did last year. As some of these stormwater facilities, there will be some stormwater facilities that we, uh, take, take maintenance of. And so we're just anticipating here that, uh, some of these facilities, as we start to take maintenance, we'll be incurring, incurring that cost. Legislative affairs, public relations, um, pretty much just about budgeting again what we budgeted last year. Other administration and overhead. Little bit of in, increase in insurance costs, um, that should be relative to a vehicle, and we can look at the detail here in a second. Um, overall, a decrease, other professional fees, uh, you'll see a decrease in professional fees. Uh, last year, we were budgeting for some heavier fees around our wetland, rent land sale. Those fees were starting to ratchet down as that project's wrapping up, or as the design's wrapping up. Um, capital outlay land, you'll see some land purchases there. Those, those land purchases again are relative to the conversation on regional retention. Um, there's a, a portion, a parcel that we're looking at up in the northwest corner of the community, and there's a couple parcels over in the northeast portion of the community that we're looking at for purchase in the next year. Machinery and equipment, let's just, I'm gonna go to the detail page on that so we can look at that. This position. Yeah, I was thinking we had a half-ton trucks, so the forty-five thousand is a half-ton extra cab. Uh, the, the position was using a vehicle that was a, uh, handed-down, um, smaller utility or smaller extra cab pickup, uh, wasn't a, it wasn't a Nissan, but it was something like that. That vehicle got hit and totaled over here on Prospect and, and Seventh. Uh, we bought it back from the insurance company and, and repaired it and have been continuing to use it, but that does need to get replaced, um, so we have that, that expense there. The infrastructure side, some drain tile, we've got a, an area up there behind Dover where we have that large hundred-foot wide drainage movement. Um, several property owners up there, uh, have complained about some of the cattails that are developing and their inability to, um, mow through their backyards. Uh, so we have agreed as a function of our, of our stormwater program to look at some drain tile in those areas and see if we can alleviate that. Again, some, and the rest of that is around the regional detention, uh, Thirty-Something Eisenhower, east regional wetlands detention. Uh, so those again are reflecting back to, this is some, um, engineering costs, professional services costs around those sites. Potentially some construction dollars in there as well. And then again, we have the, the wetland bank project, this would anticipate construction costs for the wetland bank. Any questions?
I, I got a, I got a couple here. So stormwater utility has a quarter of a person for, for employment. What is this new hire, six hundred and fifty dollar physical then? On, in item eighty, or sixty-eight, I'm sorry, eight, sixty-eight?
Well, I think in general, I believe we, we typically carry a new hire. I realize there, there may be an individual there, um, sometimes they leave, and so just historically, I think we've carried some expense in case there's a turnover in staff. Where are you, sixty-eight?
Yep, sixty-eight, they're, they're at the bottom before professional fees.
I'm not sure why new hire physicals would be down under.
I'm not sure why they'd be six hundred and fifty bucks.
Jessica's not here, I don't know if that's probably a, a cost that we pay to a company to do that.
Yeah, so I'll kinda speak to this, uh, since Human Resources Director Jessica DeVore can't be here tonight. So when we have a new employee start with one that is, um, especially in a labor field, potentially stormwater who's going to be out to a field doing physical labor, we do require pre-employment physicals. They do go through an entire physical, which includes, um, workups. Um, we also require them to do what's called a physical agility test to make sure that they are physically able to do the physical requirements of the job. Now, depending on the labor extensive requirements of the job, it could lead up to six hundred and fifty dollars, not certainly past it, but that's why we budget up to six hundred and fifty dollars, not more.
Okay, okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
It does. Um, and then, uh, item eighty-one, the east regional wetlands detention, where's that at?
East regional wetlands detention, uh, so this is land purchase, this would generally be related to, um, area between Victory Road and Highway thirty-five.
Don't, don't we potentially have a developer putting in a detention pond now?
That is a temporary detention pond anticipating a regional detention pond in that area. There's already one detention pond over there relative to another subdivision. The idea here is to create a larger detention pond. Combine those into one larger system.
Why, why would we pay for a retention pond that has one for a current development and one that is a possible future development? I mean, it's no temporary, it's there for that development, the size of that development.
So the conversation with the developer has been to, on the southern side of that development, to take eight, 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 nine, ten different, uh, potential lots that sit on the southern side of that and turn those into re- uh, retention? That's intended to be an interim retention pond until we can get regional retention over there?
Who says interim? I, I don't ever recall interim, is that, that's what I'm saying, I don't recall interim. It's a requirement that he has to retain his own water.
It is, and the funding, that hundred thousand dollars in funds could, could come from, could come from him.
There has to be some bigger discussion there.
Yeah, but yeah, that's, we've been looking at that site as regional retention since twenty seventeen. And we'll be presenting a regional retention study, we've got that study back here in the last three, four weeks, so we'll be presenting that, we're looking at, oh, six sites around, around the community for this regional retention. And that, that is one site that we've been looking at. Actually, there, there's actually two, two sites over there in that same general area. There's one on the east side of Highway thirty-five, uh, would provide a site very similar to the Roche Dam facility, um, and then this particular site here.
Have we looked at, um, that Eighteenth Street where we have runoff going into the cemetery there?
Yes, um, that, that site has had some storm sewer improvement there. Um, we've been monitoring that through these last few storms, I think it's functioning well. Shane, I just mentioned it to Shane yesterday, he thought it was functioning well.
And I can speak to that because I know the lady that we're talking about here, and she's very pleased with how the project has worked out, and, and her whole family's just thrilled, so, thank you guys.
You can, you can, you can sleep well, Justin.
I guess I do have a, a question. When you have an employee that dedicates forty percent of their time, can we find a, a different vehicle? I mean, do we, do we have to have a forty-five thousand dollar vehicle for forty percent of their time? Used in stormwater?
I would assume that person would use that, you know, full, full-time for, for any of, you know, when they're outside of that area as well.
Then, then that'd be a cost share, would it not?
We could look at it as, as a cost share.
Okay. Either follow-up questions for Steve? Anybody from the public wanna have a chance to talk to Steve?
Jim McKenzie, just a question, when I, when I'm doing the calculations on the point four person and the salary, so does that mean that full-time position is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar salary?
No, it's not, Jim.
Cause if seventy thousand, eight eighty-four is point four, then a hundred and seventy-seven thousand is, is one point oh. So, I, I believe, based, based on the numbers I see here, I think that this, this needs to go to a full person. So we were using this when we were having, when we had the shortage in engineering, we had split this person just to get some more help in engineering, so we were, we were, that's why we were paying them between both sides. Most recently, I think just July first here, we had another person start, and so I think this is, you know, I think this needs to be updated to reflect that this person, now that we're fully staffed, is gonna be full-time storm sewer. The dollars, the dollars in there for the salary represent full-time. Okay, so those dollars are for one full-time person? Yeah. Okay, alright, thank you. And that probably answers some of your question too there, Councilman Hildebrand.
Need just, other questions, any additional questions? Okay. Moving on to the, uh, presentation of the airport authority budget, although I see we don't have anyone here. Oh, perfect timing.
I'm missing people.
Okay. We, we can just keep, we'll push you down. No problem, let's move on to our presentation of debt service budget then. Yeah, it looks like Sheila gets the, to start there.
Oh wait, okay, you got there, Lyle?
I think so.
So let's move to one sixty-five in your book.
So this budget keeps the property tax amount the same as the prior year, and that's one million, eleven thousand, sixty-two dollars. In, interest income increases forty-one thousand, one hundred, and this is due to the increase in interest rate and fund balance. There is a transfer in a council priority dollars of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-four, and this would be to pay off the airport's debt if they choose to do that. Then going on to the expenditures. Transfers out decrease two thousand, four hundred and one. This transfer out is the general obligation portion of special assessment bonds. Debt service increases seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five, or ten percent. And the increase is primarily due to, um, again, that we put the airport debt in there. That's something for you guys to consider. So no other, no, uh, debt was issued in this fund during the year, so the rest of the debt service is essentially the same as the prior year. Ending fund balance increases about four hundred and eighty-seven thousand to almost five point six million, and this is all property tax to be used on future debt service. Are there any questions?
Any other questions here? Questions from anybody here tonight? Okay, we'll move on from here to the, um, presentation of the special assessment budget. Sheila, you got that again, it looks, looks like?
So the special assessment budget is six separate budgets broken out by assessment districts, and I'm just gonna go over the summary budget. Beginning fund balance decreases about one point eight million, and this is primarily due to spending the bond anticipation notes on the Norfolk one forty assessment districts. The only district we assessed during the past year was the North Highway 81 Water District. And then we anticipate assessing the Norfolk 140 districts, also the Mach 1 Water and Sewer, and the 37th and Prospect Water and Sewer, either this fall or next spring. We are budgeting $5,470,000 for proceeds of debt. And this, I'll go over the projects that this funds when we do the expenditures. So on the expenditures, there's other professional fees, and it increases $50,000. And this is for bond issuance costs. So after we assess the Norfolk 140 districts, we'll issue the various purpose bonds to pay off the bond anticipation notes. And we're budgeting about $32,000 in transfers out. This is a transfer to the general fund to close out Fund 426. The last of the debt service in Fund 426 will be paid in September. So then we'll close out that fund and remove the remaining to the general fund. There's $5,312,960 budgeted for infrastructure. So this is for gap paving on Northwestern and Jefferson. The sidewalk district on Fifth Street. And there's $2.4 million in there for future paving districts. And then for the water and sewer, there's Rolling Hills and Portia Place. And that's sewer only. And then Valley High Water and Sewer. And there's $1.5 million for future water and sewer districts. So the debt service decreases $153,205. There's a series, 2022 Bond Anticipation Notes that matures at the end of the current fiscal year. So we'll be making a principal payment on that. And then because of that principal payment made this year, it decreases the amount of debt service next year. Although that is partially offset with the increase in interest on those proceeds of debt that are budgeted. Are there any questions on any of the projects in this fund?
Steve, on that South Fifth Sidewalk District, wouldn't that be bonded through the VPD and assessed to the property owners, the VPD?
Yes.
Is it going to be on the both sides?
Yes.
Okay. Have we talked to other streets to see if they want to do the same thing, or just that one? Okay.
They approached us. It was a kind of a combination of multiple properties on the east side, a little bit with the property on the west side as well. But there's two, maybe three properties on the east side that have gone under redevelopment. And as a function of that, their sidewalks no longer meet ADA code. And rather than deal with them individually, several of the property owners just kind of said, let's just, rather than have all this up and down stuff, let's do the whole block and make it uniform. And make it, you know, kind of make it work together. So with that, then we had some conversation with the folks on the east side, and they wanted to join in and get all of their sidewalk redone as well. And we'll take that opportunity to look at that, at least that south corner, and maybe we'll bring in all four corners at that intersection of Norfolk and Fifth and do the bulb out, kind of bulb outs, and make all that happen at the same time.
Other questions? Questions from the audience? Yep, airport's not ready yet.
Hello. Good evening. Afternoon. All right, so as we look at the LB 840 budget, there's really no new revenue coming in. That program has expired. And so what we're working with right now is just the outstanding loans. We have one loan that's outstanding. That was a loan that was made to the Women Empowering Lifeline Group to create the Child Care Center. And to have their loan be forgivable, or at least 99% forgivable, they needed to create 11 full-time equivalent positions and retain those jobs for two years, paying at least $15 per hour to meet the minimum requirements. So that, they will, they have, my understanding, have created the jobs, and now we're just monitoring to make sure that those jobs stay in existence. The Neighbor Works Grant, that was a part of that program, or forgivable loan that was a part of that program. Recent, they've met their criteria. They created 30 workforce housing units. And so we closed out that loan this week. Any questions on the LB 840?
So really following after this year, this fund goes away because everything has been exhausted out of it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then I guess a question for finances. So whatever ending balance is on there, does that just go to the general fund?
We could, if we have an ending balance, when this is all said and done, have another little loan program. But is this any interest that has been paid that we, that service payments will be paying back?
Yeah, some of this is interest that the well is paying. And so 99% of it will get refunded back to them. We're talking there's going to be less than $10,000 in this fund when it's done. I'm hoping we can find something under our voter-approved plan that we can spend it. But otherwise, we could transfer it to the general fund, and then it has to be used to reduce property taxes over, what is it, like the next?
Five years.
Five years. How do you track doing that? So, yeah.
And we've toyed with the idea, we've had a lot of administrative costs for this program, and we've never charged any administrative fees to this. As opposed to messing around with something over five years for such a small amount of property tax reduction, maybe we just treat it as an admin fee and put it in one year. Or I suppose we could, like I say, have another small loan, which would, if it gets repaid, then we've got a little bit of interest. Eventually, we gotta do something with this other than loan it out, because it's going to keep getting smaller and smaller and smaller. Yes, that's my thought.
Any other questions for the LB 840 budget?
Candace, I got one question for you. Has the legislature talked about maybe bringing something like this back?
So this would be up to us to bring back. It's a voter-approved plan.
Okay.
And so I think last time this went through, I was not in this position or at the city. But I think the chamber led that, that charge, am I right?
2002, was that when it was?
2010.
10?
10.
I believe it was 2010.
Yeah, that was a couple of years before I joined the city. But I believe the chamber led that charge. And so what we would need to do is create what our plan would look like. So we could use the same plan, or we could take a look at some other plans from across the state, see which ones from other economic development organizations or cities have been successful. And then we could present that plan to the voters. This is what our plan would look like, and then they get to decide whether they want to implement it again and what type of tax we would use. So I think the cities used property tax in the past, and some communities used sales tax.
Most of them have used, I believe, sales tax. Or we might be the only one that used property tax. I know not very many have used property tax.
So that's something that we could look at if there was a community desire to see that put back in motion, back in place.
Thanks. Any other questions? Anybody have any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the Presentation of the Economic Development Operating Budget. Candace, you'll be leading that?
Yes. Are we there? Thanks, Lyle.
Yeah, I'll just try and mirror what you're talking about.
Sure. So I want to start out with my revenue and what that looks like, because it's a little bit different each time. Thanks, Mel. Sorry, sorry you guys were running ahead of schedule, so I printed something off and then I ran right past the printer. So thanks, Mel. So if you look at the budget revenue, you see that part of it's coming from the county, and part of those are inter-fund operating transfers. And you can see that county, or that county funding is at $206,000. And then that inter-fund transfer is $276,000. So I kind of wanted to break down what this, how this compares to last year and what we're looking at this year. So a couple of years ago, we had a very nice fund balance. I think we had about $300,000 of fund balance in the Economic Development Operating Fund that was just kind of sitting out there. And we engaged with the county, and they said, hey, what we'd like to see is do one year of a reduced revenue to spend down that fund balance a little bit. And then we can go back up to what our original contributions looked like. And so that year, we did a one-time 150 revenue transfer in from each entity. The county put in 150, and the city put in 150. The city put that difference in a set-aside fund for economic development, just to earmark those funds for future projects. And I'll talk about some of those ideas I have for those funds in just a few minutes. So the inter-local agreement said after that one year of $150,000 contribution, both entities would go up to $200,000 per year. And then each year after that, it would increase by 3% from the $200,000. So this is where it gets kind of funny. If I have anything over $100,000 in my fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, then that amount is reduced for each party's contribution for the next funding year. Does that make sense? So instead of, for that 2024, '25 budget year, instead of $200,000 there, you see a contribution of $182,982. And so that's because each entity received a refund, because I had over $100,000 in my fund balance. Everybody following? We tried to make it really complicated. So what we did then was we started at $200,000 contribution last year. You see the reduction, but each year, that 3% increases from that $200,000. So if I have a reduction again next year, because I'm over $100,000, my starting fund, my starting revenue, will be 3% of that $206, not 3% of the reduced amount. And I'm happy to break that down with anybody in a follow-up conversation if you have more questions. So the unequal balance, typically what's put into my fund is equal, equal part county and city. But what we did is I identified a couple ideas for projects that we could take on if we so choose. And so we looked at those funds that were earmarked and set aside for economic development over in our water and sewer. If we choose not to move forward with those projects, we don't have to transfer that extra over. But that is an option, because those funds are set aside for economic development. So as we move through, I tried to keep things fairly consistent and lower cost where I could. Where are you?
I'm on revenue right now, should I go to expenditures?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You point to where you want to talk, and I'll look at your finger.
Okay. Our personnel cost did increase just slightly. We did lose an intern, but that was countered with the various increases that there are to personnel cost right now. I've dropped my vehicle fuel down a little bit, I noticed we weren't using as much. And tried to cut some areas where maybe organizations or services that we didn't necessarily need to participate in anymore. I'll jump down to legal notices and advertising. I did double that this year. We've been working with a group called Golden Shovel Agency. And they're a group that specializes in economic development advertising. And if you follow Norfolk Now, or if you follow Norfolk Area EDC on LinkedIn or Facebook, you might see some of our ads that are running out there. Those ads are currently being targeted in specific areas of the country where we did some data research and found an outmigration of people from the Norfolk area to those places. And so we are trying to target some of those ads to those individual places to give them a little reminder of home, and hopefully see if we can recruit them back if possible. We're doing a dual marketing campaign right now of both talent and business recruitment. And so the talent's primarily being fed through Norfolk Now, and the business recruitment, we're focusing in on LinkedIn. I also, there's interest in upping and doing a more of a focus on alumni recruitment. Jean Regal's brought some ideas forward. And so I put a little bit of money in my marketing budget to hopefully come alongside her in that endeavor, because I think it's a great idea. Anytime we can target alumni, individuals that have roots here, I think we have more success in successfully recruiting them back if they have moved away. As far as those other professional fees, I just had a couple ideas and thought I would bring them forward for you to consider and think about. A countywide industrial site identification study is one of those things. I have a quote for a $40,000 update to that study. The last study we conducted was in 2016. And what it really does is it takes and takes a full look at the county, Madison County is my service area. And we take a look at what sites are out there that have potential or hold potential for industrial development. In addition to, like, heavy manufacturing, I also want to take a look at one site that could maybe handle heavy commercial or light industrial for each of our smaller communities that we serve. And to make sure that we're working alongside them to identify areas of growth potential for them. That really includes taking a look at reviewing what we did study already. A couple of those sites that emerged for highly recommended sites to further master plan. We did master plan. And we did that using partnerships with Nebraska Public Power District. They have a site readiness program, and they'll match your master planning costs and your site planning costs with a grant. And so we always try to go after that grant to make sure that we're lowering costs. And we always try to work alongside the property owners too, when we're master planning a specific site, to make sure that they have skin in the game. I did check with MPPD, and they said that this would be a potential candidate for that grant program. And so hopefully, I wouldn't have to use the whole $40,000. I could come in and maybe get half of that matched and only have to spend $20,000. But I did budget the full 40, not knowing if that grant was a possibility at this time. Any questions about a site identification study? Retail recruitment consulting services is another idea that we could really take a look at. I know retail sales is concerning right now. And I know that there's a lot of tools out there that could help us. Engaging in professional services for retail recruitment. Engaging in professional services for retail recruitment is something a lot of economic development organizations do, a lot of communities do. It's something we could certainly take a look at. We have tried it in the past and I was not satisfied with those services and we discontinued the use of those services. But we could certainly take a look at re-engaging with maybe a different consultant. But it was very disheartening because when I had called like other communities that had used those services, they were like, yes, this was a great program. It worked great. We got retail recruited. They go to trade shows and they advocate on behalf of your community. And so I did provide a report to that company and they would like to make amends with us, but we will certainly take a look at all different types of companies if this is a plan that you want to move forward with. They really do a community evaluation of your retail leakage and where you're seeing surplus. And they create market guides that can speak to those retailers on to why they should come and do business in the community. They work alongside the economic development staff to do property identification. And they indicated that they do daily retail outreach. So that's another option that we could look at as it relates to economic development special studies. And then I did a budget, $5,000 for that countywide housing study. I think Rita might have left, but I'm guessing Rita touched on that during her budget presentation. That's something, we're not quite sure what that cost looks like yet because we haven't gotten all of the details from NIFA on what their grant match looks like. And so I put $5,000 in there, not quite knowing what that split would be yet, but to have some money earmarked for the project. And then the final one is legal services for a TIF project. And this number, $25,000 is really an estimate. We're not sure what that is going to look like as it relates to how much we would be engaging legal, additional legal to really get guidance on Kelby Herman's project. But we know it's a big one and we know that there's a lot of potential city infrastructure that could benefit from the development of that area. And so there was a request from council to take a look at that and see if that's something we could fit in the budget. And so that negotiation support, I think is going to be helpful. We as staff are going to work really hard to try to engage that legal service as much as we can via Zoom. And so we're not paying for drive time. So. That's my budget in a nutshell. Any questions for me? And Troy Uller, he was going to come here and we just got ahead of schedule. And so I didn't have time to text him before I came running down here when I saw you guys were progressing through. But the county heard an annual update from me in June. And actually I summarized the report that I did for the county in a pamphlet that I'll give to each of you today. I'll just grab it right now.
While she's doing that, Madison County is in a tornado watch. In the event we need to take action, we as a body and whoever's here in the crowd, our fallback area will be the vault right here until sirens call.
So I just put together this annual update. So I provide quarterly reports to the Madison County Commissioners as it relates to what I do on a day-to-day basis for economic development. And so I've summarized that in a nice little report. On the major goals, you'll see that industrial site study, housing study, retail recruitment consulting services. And then you'll also see at the bottom, then Nebraska ED Certified Community Reference. That's something our team's going to be working on and I'm passing around a copy of that as well. This is a great guide and I was able to share this with Councilwoman Jensen and Councilwoman Beckman when we sat down and just talked about what it is that our team does. And this offers just a great synopsis of what a successful economic development organization is doing and implementing on a day-to-day basis. So we'll be working on that application. Gives us extra points when we apply for grants. So we make sure that we prioritize that every five years when it comes due. Yes. I made extra. Any questions for me? Okay.
Any questions from the audience?
Yeah.
Sorry, getting tornado people are questioning tornado warning here. But yeah, anybody have any other additional questions, please come forward.
Jim McKenzie, I have a question about the earmarked funds that were set aside that were referred to from those years where, that one year, I guess, where the city put less money. Were those set aside in some kind of a fund or I've never heard that before.
Those are in the utility funds.
But I mean, were they actually carried in a balance in a utility fund? I mean, when I look at the utility funds, it looks like new money is coming out of there to do this.
I'll let Sheila address that, but there's a.
So in last year's budget, you can see that down in the ending balance, we put assigned for economic development. Last year's budget balance was 31,417.
Okay, so it came out of the utility budgets last year, I guess it was.
It's still in the utility budget.
I see.
In the utility budget, just earmarked for economic development.
Okay, okay.
What page are you on, Sheila?
Well, this is last year's budget. It's 185.
I guess I thought when we were paying down or using up that balance that was there, it was a savings to the city, but it really wasn't. It was just pushing it down the road. Okay. My next, well, question would be that there's an inter-fund operating transfer in. It goes up by 50% for the city. So I guess the county didn't set aside anything or just the city set aside, I would assume. Okay, okay. The other comment I would have would be on the staffing again. That we've got three people in there to staff this and yet we're only going to have two people working in the department. And Scott, I appreciate your response to my questions. I'm just going to say clearly this ties, this budget ties to the city attorney because right now the city attorney is going to be paid out of this budget. City attorney in the history of Norfolk has never been paid out of enterprise funds, never. It's always been a general fund. And I'm just asking you to do the right and the ethical thing and pay for that out of general fund. That's where it should be and that's the right and the ethical thing to do. To do anything else is, makes me lose complete confidence in our process. To say, okay, we're going to suddenly, we're going to suddenly change this and we're going to do it out of an economic development fund instead of out of general fund, where it's always been for the history of the city. And you know the duties are general fund duties. And to try and put those in a different fund is just inappropriate. I'm asking you to do the right thing, put it where it belongs. Thank you.
Jim, I have a question for you.
Yep.
So if Mel is, ends up doing point three for economic development, point seven in city attorney, we're supposed to charge it all to the city attorney?
You can break it up that way if that's what it ends up being.
That's, I just want to know what makes this, what makes this whole for us. So we have to determine what her economic, how much she's going to be in economic development versus city attorney?
Absolutely. And I would be shocked that very much is in economic development. What we heard the other night was how much that job is demanding. And when you've got somebody who's brand new is going to have to learn and train, I'd be shocked if her 100% of her time is in the city attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Let's move forward to the presentation of the Vehicle Parking District budget, please.
We skipped the airport there.
What?
We skipped the airport.
I know, we'll get it last.
So the Vehicle Parking District is going to be presented by Connie Geary and Stephanie Bates and they are not here. But I will, I'll text them right now because I gave them a different schedule.
All right, let's go ahead and move to the airport authority then. No, we're not.
I could call her. She could hurry up and come over, but. Okay, let's see here. You're signing?
Oh.
That's what we're waiting for. You can sign down there. You do your thing and I'll try and follow along. Okay, I'll try to follow along. While he's signing in, I'll go ahead and get started. Dan Geary is my name. Justin Martin and Tyler are our new accounting personnel. So if you got a copy of our request, I'll hit the basics of it just as quick as I can and then we'll go into details afterwards. So basically, our budget is the same as it was last year. So we're not making any increase or decrease in the budget. It's the same as what we asked for last year. And I would imagine that one of the questions that you, I want to know, what are we going to do about our building program and whatever? So we have our, we have our, we lost our congressional funds and we got caught last year with going to bid with the building right up until the time when we, we thought we were going to have the money and then the money went away. And we didn't have the job divided into two parts so we could just take bids on part A and part B. And if we didn't have the money, kind of a mistake on our part, but that's, that's what happened and that's what we did. So we had to withdraw that right at the, three days before the bid date or something like that, which was disappointing for all of us, but then, so anyway, we have a smaller building built into this budget. If you look at there, we're going to issue bonds for a smaller building and proceed with that along with this year's budget. Okay, so basically the operation, fuel sales, expenses on the airport are just simply increased by inflation or something. There's not any real thing, things that jump out at you as far as expenses as whatever's going on. So that's what, no, I want to address the fact that when we, when we issue the bonds, our budget is not going to go up by the amount of the payment on the bonds. We've had money built into this budget for a while and so there's, the budget will increase a little bit, but very little with the bonds that we're going to issue. However, we have new, we have a new ALP plan and there's a major runway improvement that we need to do that's sitting out there. I don't remember what the total amount for that was.
We would be on the hook for 1.3 million.
But what's the total project?
So that's 10%, so what, 10?
$10 million project, okay. So when that, but when that comes down the pike, well, we'll have an increase in budget whether we build a building or whether we don't. I mean, that's just, just one of the things. Now I need to tell you something about the runway. Our runway is, has some problems, not necessarily problems. It has always been in, what would you say, out of compliance with some of the FAA specifications. So there's a, there's a dip in it.
There's a dip in the runway. And if we had to, if we let the runway go too long before rehabilitation happens, what will happen is the FAA will make us replace the entire runway, which, and that will be a very, very expensive bill for not only, for the city of Norfolk and for the FAA. So really what we want to do is we're getting this ALP done so that way we can address that issue now. We just got our license renewed from the Department of Aeronautics in Nebraska and they listed, the last time they said our rehabilitation would be about 645,000 for our cost. And it's went up in the last three years to 1.3 million. So one of the, that's one of the driving factors to get this ALP done. So that way we can look at it and see what, or if we have to do that runway rehabilitation right now.
So, so anyways, so we'd have to take the dip out of the runway. And so that'd be four or five feet of fill in the middle and make it straight. And I think, I think the approach isn't quite right out there either. So, and there's, and then we're waived because, well, we have a displaced threshold because the buildings to the north are encroaching on it. So actually that runway is displaced right now to be in compliance. The FAA had us do that. So anyway, so last year when we didn't do the building, we switched over and used our funds that we were going to lose and went into upgrading our ALP plan. ALP is Airport Layout Plan that we have to have on file that we keep. And it's, it's the 10, 15, 25-year plan that we have for the airport so that if somebody comes up with an idea that, hey, I want to put some hangers here or something, well, if it's in the plan, that something else is going to go there. So that just keeps, keeps everything aligned. So we're working on the ALP plan for this year.
When working on, when working on that ALP plan, do you, we formed a committee for the ALP plan yet?
Not, not yet.
Because we were talking about that the other day.
I'm, I'm waiting for whoever from the city would like to be on that.
We need two councilmen for that ALP plan. So we just need to get some volunteers here who want to be on that. Let staff know and we'll get you on there.
And we know that and we've, and those probably need to be public meetings.
Yeah, correct.
So that, we know that. So yes, we know that. We're just waiting for our designer or the company that's doing it to.
We're, I, I'm getting a couple of names from the city and then I will, I actually have it on our agenda for Monday to talk about.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up because that way these guys know.
And we want as much.
Appreciate it.
It's a public hearing and so we put it out there, so.
And we want as much public input as we can get or council input, whatever, because we want to do what the city wants and what's best for the city, okay? All right, questions?
Is your new building plan on your website by chance? Is your new building, the one that got revamped from the original, has that, is that on your website at all for public display?
We have not yet because we haven't finalized that design yet.
Okay.
That's going to be part of the ALP. We're going to finalize that with the ALP. There's some money in the ALP that we can actually use to revamp that.
Okay.
But the design work for the other building kind of goes away and gets kind of wasted. I mean, we may be able to do.
$400,000 in plans is wasted, yeah.
Well.
I guess I got one other question and I guess this has been on, has been a conversation ever since I've been on council about your fuel sales. And I see you got a little over a million dollars in fuel sales. Is that net or is that your gross on your fuel sales?
Net.
That is, that is your peer profit then?
Yep.
Okay.
What's the?
The fuel sales, a million dollars. That's gross. That's gross, sorry.
That's gross, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Do you have the cost number in on that?
Yeah, it's on the second page. The FEO field for resale is 700,000. Yeah, it's on the second page. The FBO fuel for resale is 700,000. The next page.
What happened to be the line item?
In the other operating costs.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. You have 32.
And I think we've said it before that, you know, we kind of keep fuel fairly reasonable. You know, we're operating, yep, I'm sorry. We're operating the FBO ourselves. And so we, we try to make sure that we have an accounting of how much it's costing us to have people in the FBO and whatever, so that, so that fuel sales covers that cost. And, and a little bit, I mean, some profit in there, but we're, we are under the, we are trying to do economic development for the city in Norfolk by having reasonable fuel prices.
So do you consider reasonable to be the lowest of a class one city? Or where, where, what is a reasonable?
Well, not the lowest, but.
Uh, as far as I, I'm not, when, when I price the fuel, I'm not looking at the big cities. Because if they have domestic flights, they have, they have contract pricing. So they can put 10. Right. Yeah. I got you. But I, I'm, I'm judging off the cities around us, like O'Neal and the places that, the planes that come to our airport could viable, viably go in the route that they're going. So O'Neal, Columbus, Wayne, those are, those are viable options. Wayne is actually putting in jet fuel now. So I, my fear is if Wayne puts jet fuel in, they're already way lower than we are. I can't, I can't touch their price.
You've got 11,356 budgeted for travel and education. Could you explain what, what you are doing with that?
That is for the Four States Conference and the Nebraska Conference for Education for us to meet with other airports and go through. You could talk more on this. I haven't been to one yet.
FAA puts out seminars. So there's a Four States Airport Conference that goes on in Kansas City. And they invite airport authorities to come to them. And that give, they, they give us reports on what the FAA is doing nationally and what they're looking for in your airport, you know, and, and whatever safety area or whatever it has, you know. Years ago, they, they wanted to get rid of all the underground fuel tanks or, or there's, there's, there's all kinds of things that, that come out. And then, and then, you know, the national, the Department of Transportation in Washington sets out national goals for what they want their airports to do, especially when, if there's any safety issues and that kind of thing. So, so, you know, one, one year they had us all look and see the distance between runways, the distance between taxiways to make sure we're in compliance and, and we're not too close together. And so, so that, and that, and that takes place on a, almost a national basis at Kansas City. And then a state, statewide basis. So we have our state ALP plan. So, you know, our state, what do they call the state funds? Nebraska has funds that they put out too. So, so the Nebraska Carney one is, is a little bit more local, what's going on in Nebraska.
So they make 150.
And then there's other training on top of that, like one of the FBO guys and I went to Colorado for part 139 training, which is field safety training and understanding if we were to get domestic flights back in, what we would have to do to the airport to be in compliance.
And tell me about your credit card fees for $13,600.
Those are the credit card fees that are, whenever we process a credit card for fuel. That's, that's what that is. What I have done to reduce that is I'm actually implying, implementing a chargeback to the customer now for that three or 4%. Because I, I saw that and I saw that was a pretty big line item. So. The only one we can't is government and military. We can't charge it back. And they have the highest rate. It's like 4.75 that they charge us. So.
So your, item 42, your maintenance went from 70,000 to 100,000. And when I looked back at the 2024, 2025 budget, we had roof replacement, roof repair, not underneath the 42 account. And so.
Is that building maintenance or is that equipment maintenance?
What's that?
This line item, the 100,000.
That would mainly, the roof replacement, since that's more capital in nature, that's, would be its own separate item. Whereas the maintenance would probably be more further, more mundane things and.
So it was put under a capital expenditure?
Yeah, for the roof is capital. And then for the maintenance would be more for the items.
So did the roof ever get paid out then?
Did the roof ever what?
Yeah. Cause I went, did it, did a, I mean, I understand that they did it.
Yeah. It got, it got paid for. Yes.
Okay. Cause I never saw it in any of your.
It was in, I think Aprils.
I'll go back. Look, I don't think I saw it as, as a payment that way.
It was on, it wa, it, it was on the list to be approved. I know that.
You did pay it, right?
Yeah.
Trying to remember if I was at the April meeting or not. So, but I'll go back on your minutes and we'll consider.
Yeah, it's, it's on there. And I just uploaded everything today, all the rest of the stuff that was missing.
Oh, good.
So the minutes are on the website then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Up to date?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the agenda's on, the only minutes that we're missing is the minutes from last month because they're not signed yet. As soon as they're signed, I'll put them on.
Other question I had for you, and I think you explained it to a certain amount because you're trying to build up your fund for that runway, runway repair, if we got to come up with 1.3. Because I was seeing you were doing a requested or loan or 4 million. And in your capital improvement program data sheet, in June 4th, your presentation to the, the federal share was 1,119,000. And local share was 58,000, just short of 59,000. So they would make that, that hangar construction project right at 1,178,000, according to your paperwork that way. So it's going, okay, we've got 1,178,000 total in there, but we've got, we're doing a $4 million bond.
Okay. So the, the $1 million, the 1,178, that's the BIL funds that are left over from the federal government. We cannot use those for the terminal. They're not.
Right. I knew we couldn't use them for the terminal.
So we, so we, we pivoted those funds over to a, a commercial hangers. Because right now we have four, four aircraft that won't fit in general aviation hangers that would fit in commercial hangers. I don't have enough money to build four commercial hangers right now. But I haven't, with that money, I can use it to build two commercial hangers and get two people out of our G4 hangar. So we can bring, when traffic comes in, we can bring them in out of the weather. Cause right now we don't have a hangar to bring any traffic in out of the weather.
So what was the, this is commercial hangers that we're talking about building, are they the equivalent to the commercial hangar that we were building with the project that didn't move forward? It's, to me, it appeared to be the same size.
They, it, it is comparable to the same size and FAA looks at it that we don't even have to redo paperwork. But the difference is, is there'll be two doors, two separate doors for the two hangers and a wall in between, basically.
Right.
Yep.
But that's, again, that's not 4 million.
No. The 4 million on ours is for the terminal project. That's three, you're looking at.
For the terminal project, for the FBO or for?
Yeah, the FBO building.
Yes, sir. Because we're still not throwing that idea completely out that we need a new terminal.
We took the.
But so then my question, if we're potentially doing a new terminal and doing a $4 million there, according to last year's budget situation, if you did a 15-year bond on 4.5 mil, you're going to be a $435,000 annual payment. Or if you did it over a 20-year period, you're going to be a $365,000 annual payment. And none of that's federally funded. And so that strictly goes back on to the taxpayer rolls. Correct?
Well, like I tried to mention earlier, we've got some of these funds in here. So there will be a little bit of increase for those bonds, but otherwise, you know, we've, we've, you've been giving us, well, you gave us the $400,000 last year or whatever to do the, in the budget. Okay? So with, with our budget staying, staying where it is right now, we've got money built in to make payments on that bond.
Yeah, you have 1,421,000 carryover, but that's, I mean.
With, with $200,000 in excess. So if we take that and we cut expenses other places, we can hope to float. That's what we're trying to do is float the bond ourselves and not come to the city for it. And with some of the other money that was going out, that's not going to be hopefully, well, I know we can, we can tighten the screws.
Well. You know, we've been, we've been planning on, we've been putting money in here for this for three years to get this built. We haven't got a build yet. So we.
But you, you're talking the terminal building?
Yes.
Yeah. Cause I don't think you can get a bill for $4 million, not at the present design.
We can't build a building that you saw in the picture. No, that.
That's what I'm saying. Yes.
Yes.
At present design, you.
No, no, absolutely. We know, we know that. So we've got to go back to a, a whole new design and a different building.
And that's, that's what we're talking about. There's some money in the ALP that we can go back and redesign, do some redesign on it and reduce size and kind of look at some other projects that HDR is putting on in other states and other places. And hopefully kind of borrow their designs versus completely redesigning something, which would cost a significant amount of money.
So they won't charge us a full 430,000 then again?
No.
Well, well, I'm not.
You think? You're talking HDR.
I can't promise you that. No, they, no, I, they'll, they'll charge for it atrociously. Okay? But it's a smaller building and, and, and we realize that, that's what we got to do.
Dan does have an engineer in the family, so he can't beat on us too hard.
So we do think that without the federal funding, there's some federal building regulations that won't have to go into the new building. So, so there's some of that stuff that'll, that'll help.
Yeah, we'll save quite a bit of money not having to do federal.
Oh, we'll save some money.
Yeah, there was some substantial requirements in there. Let's just put it that way.
But we got inflation going like this the whole time we're doing this. So.
Is design build an option for you?
Probably.
Yes.
Might help.
Yes.
We have a for, does the city have a format to put that out for proposals or how, how do you select a design build contractor and, and what do?
We have a, we have a process we can share.
But again, it's all, most of that stuff's going to be through.
Your airport layout plan, correct? The discussion on the current hangar, the new hangar, the, the runway and the potential.
That, the.
Terminal or?
The commercial hangers are, they're already approved by the FAA. So they're ready to go.
So you got that taken care of?
Yes. The, the thing, the thing about it is, sorry.
Yeah, no, no. What, the airport layout plan, that portion, what's that all entail then? Just break down real quick. You know, I mean, is that the run, the new runway that you're talking about, right?
Yeah. The, so they'll go through and they'll do core samples of our runway. They, they do surveys for like trees and every, and wildlife. And there's just all kinds of surveys that get done.
So I guess what I'm getting at is so you've got an airport layout committee that'll be getting together, that you're going to have two council people on. People, woman, men. Anyway, so, so we'll see who wants to be on that. But, but that, and, and when you're working through that, you're going to be working through a lot of these details that we're talking about today. I think what happens when we speculate in this particular council, you can't really speculate. Speculation, you know, we're talking, we reach out, maybe design bill work this. That's where things get kind of off the hook. That makes sense. So my, my thought would be, you know, we're going to have this airport layout plan or committee working together, moving forward. We're talking about the term or the FO, was it FOB?
FBO.
FBO. FBO. And then, you know, obviously maybe placement, you said you had some buildings maybe that had to be removed or moved because of where the runway comes in or whatnot. But I would think that that time then you'd have a more in, enact plan put together. So you kind of have like a pricing on the building and kind of where you're at. I mean, so I guess what I'm getting at is we're, we're approving a budget or speculating on a budget. None of these light items are, especially when it deals with, just they're placeholders in your budget, correct, right now? You still have to approve to issue the spending, right? Or would you commence on the spending if the line, these line holders that you have now for the, these particular projects? I guess what I'm getting at is what are we approving here? You know, we're kind of, kind of talking about a couple of different things. As far as your budget, you're asking for a budget with no mil levy increase. I'm assuming it just stays base, what you, what you've been having.
Correct.
I think Jim's got some concern on the bond, being able to finance the bond long-term and they're not coming back for a tax mil levy increase.
Correct.
Once you, if you have some issues financing the bond. Would it be fair to say we need to get a, a real detailed plan put together?
Before, before we would issue the bond, we'd have to come to you for approval anyways. So.
So I guess what we're getting at, are we issuing tonight? Are we, we're not really approving. You're just presenting it.
We're presenting it on our budget.
These are just questions we'll, we'll probably be bringing up when you do come to approve the budget. So I would just kind of have that in your wheelhouse, kind of what we're going to, you know, what we're thinking here. So if we're approving placeholders, place holders, that's, that's fine. It's then pulling the trigger on those expenditures, how that looks like, you know? I think, I think that kind of sums it up a little bit, right? I mean, no? Okay. So does that make sense? Kind of?
Yes, sir.
I think that kind of makes sense how we're.
Well, I think so. But you know, we're showing that we're going to issue the bonds here and, and go with the building.
We can issue bonds before we have a building plan?
Well, he's secondly right. They can issue the bonds if it's within their budget. All we're, well, the only authority we have is to approve the budget and approve the levy request. That's essentially what we're here to do. We're not, we're not really essentially overseers of their budget.
Okay.
So I guess that's the way it sits now. We're not a.
Steve, can you talk just, I feel like it's the elephant in the room about the 75,000 we have in the budget, we're putting in the budget this year?
Can I talk about that?
We don't have anything on the agenda to.
Okay.
So it's off our, not really on agenda to bring up. But I think, I think so to maybe coming back. But I think, I think so, maybe coming back, when you come back with the budget presentation, we can maybe discuss a little more about kind of nailing down some of those questions on what you think your actual costs will be on that building and, you know, maybe a little better number put together on the size, square footage and whatnot, just so everybody feels a little more, a little safe about issuing the bond and covering your budget long-term and what that means long-term for the, you know, because it gets a little, it could be, I mean, if we're just talking about reducing expenditures to cover the bond, well, we've been, we know it's tough to do, to reduce expenditures, you know, we're doing that this year, so I guess just some thought, food for thought.
Okay, so clarify it for me. You know, we went all the way through the design, spent money on the design and the bids and everything else, and we're going to plan to proceed with it. I mean, that, that's until we lost our federal funds and we pulled it, okay? So, in appro, and with this budget, we're asking you to let us do design work on a smaller building that, that fits, that fits in this 4,560 and go. Now, if, if that's still a question, then I don't want to spend the design money on, on this and then, then, then come with a bond presentation and say, oh, no, we're not going to do that. Well, then we just spent.
Right.
However much money they decide to charge on another design and, and we, and it isn't any good.
Right.
So at some point, we've got to decide.
And, and.
And Dan.
For Dan, I didn't pull this number out of, out of thin air.
Okay.
I pulled it, so Spearfish, South Dakota is building a terminal right now that looks pretty similar to something that we could do. And theirs was projected at about 3.5 million, but talking with HDR that it's looking more towards that 4.5 million. So that's where that number came from. It wasn't, I just didn't pull a number out of thin air. I actually had the layout and everything that we wanted in a terminal into this building.
Right.
So, there might be some edits that we have to do, but it's, it should fit in that scope, so. I just didn't bring it with me because I didn't.
Sure, no, I understand.
And Dan, just, just for clarity, I've heard you made the comment a couple of times tonight, and I just thought I'd ask for clarity. You've made the comment that it was after we heard that the congressional spending was pulled, that you pulled the project.
Yes.
Well, I guess as far as tonight, this, this evening, all we really were asking for was buzz and presentation, so appreciate you guys coming forward and hope we can provide more clarity in the next, because we'll have to have you back on the 22nd. Because that's when we'll, we'll either, we'll move this forward to the council approval in mid-August, late August, so.
Okay. One, one thing when you do come back on the, and I meant to ask it earlier and did not, because I was just going through, you know, what, the revolving hangar loan fund is 43,000 bucks a year. How much longer is that, because that's for that stuff that we did in 16 or 15 that.
That's T row.
Nested T.
How many more years do we have on that? Three.
Okay. That, that was just point of reference on that, that way, so.
So that money can go into the new building?
Well, that's kind of what I was getting at, yes.
Yeah.
So, Dan, the only other thing, and that's actually back to the, you know, you're making a $33,000 a year payment to the city for the water and sewer extensions down there, which we're getting, going to get tapped on to. And from what I'm seeing, I, I got from the water and sewer department here, looks like you're back out into 2038 and 2041 before that's paid off. But you're sitting right now, I think, at a 267,000 amount.
Yeah.
That's, it's from the.
So in the, in the water and sewer budgets that were previously reviewed this evening, we do have funding in our, in this capital improvement project to pay those off this, this next year.
That's only 75,000 though, isn't it?
That's not in the, that's not in the water and sewer fund, that's in the administration fund, I believe.
Okay, yeah, because.
But we do have, we do have line items on the capital improvement, the, you know, the, the capital improvement project sheet that should, that should show some water assessment payoffs for the sewer district 147 and, so, that is, it's kind of a roundabout thing, but it's, it's city property.
Right.
We own the property, they operate the airport, we're assessing ourselves for water and sewer. We've just, so we've put it in the budget to clear that in this next year.
That, that was one thing that always befuddled me.
Yeah.
Even when we did the water and sewer down there, because again, in the amortization table that you look at, we're a quarter million dollars taking us out to 2040, and that's, that's going from left to right all the time, so.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions?
Right, thank you very much.
Anybody, anybody from public, you have any questions?
Jim McKenzie, this is in regards to the, the building. I'm not sure if they get any special interest rate. I calculated 4.56 million. That's 6% over 20 years, and the payment on that is about $390,000 a year. Their current property tax income is about $800,000 a year. That's basically a 50% levy increase to cover that, unless they've got room in their budget. When I look at their budget, you've got personnel cost of $426,000, operating supplies 23,000, utilities 141,000, other admin and overhead 158,000, a new tug 60,000. I come up with pretty close to $800,000 of expenditures to go along with the $800,000 of property tax income. So I don't see any, I don't see any fluff space in their budget to absorb any of that $390,000 payment on that new building. So that says to me, it's a, close to a 50% levy increase of their current levy to pay for that building. Unless we know where that's at, I, I think it's, I think it's dangerous to approve having those funds, having the, the ability to issue those bonds in their budget, because that was where we were at this year with this other thing, that they, they have legally the ability to issue bonds, they just can't increase the levy to pay for it. So if you're going to approve 4.5 million dollars of the bonds in their budget, that's giving them the green light to go ahead without the ability to pay for it. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Jim, in your calculations, did you consider the 300 and some thousand dollars in fuel revenue and the hangar revenue?
So, the hangar revenue of 145,000, they have other expenses that I didn't include in that 800,000. They have debt service of 76,000 I didn't include, so of course the hangar rent's going to pay for part of that 76,000. But they also have big expenses at times where they're buying a big piece of equipment. I think they bought something a couple of years ago that was a new truck or something, a hundred thousand dollars, and that's not really included in there. So I think their 800,000 is pretty tight for their existing expenses. And, yeah, they've got the revenue of 150,000, but I think, I think there's other expenses that are going to use up most of that. Now, the fuel, I'm not sure how much profit they make on fuel. I. That's how much profit they're making on the fuel? Okay.
Sales versus this expense.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, if you've got that kind of income, yeah, that might eat up some of that. But I think it'd be a good idea to have a clear picture of where that's at before you pull the trigger, because we're, that's where we're at last year. We had no clue what the, we say it's going to be a little bit, but we don't have numbers, we don't have specifics. I think it'd be good to have specifics. Thanks.
All right, and did you guys want to address any of that? Are you good? Because again, this is budget presentation, we're just, you gave it, you talked to us, okay. All right, with that being said, we will move on to the vehicle parking district budget. Item 24.
I got you. Just do your thing and I'll try and follow along on the screen.
Okay.
Oh, perfect. Printed this off, this is wonderful.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for Councilman and Mayor for letting us present our budget to you. Appreciate that. So I'll start off with the revenues that we've got. And we begin, we have a beginning balance of 197,138 dollars. And our property taxes for the year are 140,515. And we've got motor, motor vehicle per unit of 270 dollars, giving us a total in that of 147,85. And this is an increase of 8,448 dollars. And some of that is, I mean, County just raised some things and with that, we lowered our levy. But then we also gained the fact that a couple of properties came on as taxable that weren't there before. One would be the Salvation Army property that was purchased privately, and then also the Old Kensington. So those came on as additional property taxes for us. We won, just, okay. Then we have interest income of 4,900, which is just $300 more than the year before, pretty much stays the same. Total revenue is 145,685, which is a total increase of 8,748 dollars. Okay, any, any questions on revenue? No? Okay. All right, so then we'll go to the expenditures. And for that, we've got, this year we've budgeted 50,000 for snow removal. And we've just kept it up there because we don't, we don't know. Previously, we, we had done the same. Just the 23, 24 year, we ended up pretty close to that, so we've left it there. Last year, we were down probably almost 10,000 on that, but we feel that that's a safe number to keep in the budget. For electricity, we've, we've kept the same, 4,400. Water and sewer, 1,700. And then building and ground maintenance, we have decreased that a little bit, seven, by 7,480. And that, if you look back, we really, you know, we've kind of bumped it up, and I don't recall what we were planning to do with it that year, but we haven't been spending that. And we're really more at a level below the 39,000, so we feel like that's a safe number as well to leave it at that, that that gives us a cushion should something come up. For public relations, 1,500. Now, that's a decrease of 20,000, and again, if you look back to previous years, we haven't been spending that, we haven't done it for a long time. We used to share a billboard with the visitors bureau, and so that was money that we had in there for that. And we've kind of just left it there, but feel like we would like to use it in another area, so we've taken it out of there. And if we go to the next section there, insurance is 629. Basically, everything stays the same until you get down to the other professional fees. And we've put 20,000 in there, and that's, if you go to 68 on our budget. We're doing a, we want, we're wanting to do a parking study, so we've taken that out of there, that, where we haven't been using it really and putting it over here to be able to do a parking study. So, and then the capital outlay, the 85,000, that's been in there for a couple of years that we've been doing that. That was part of the festoon lighting for the downtown, that we set that aside. And so that's still there because the project just hasn't been completed yet. Then debt service kind of stays the same, really not much change there. Our ending balance is 96,599 dollars. Total funds accounted for, 342,823. Any questions on the expenditures? No? We're good? Okay. Well, thank you.
Connie, I'm going to ask, so on the property tax, property tax ask for this year, is it the same? Did we lower the levy equal to the gain minus the two properties?
No, we didn't. I don't think we, we didn't change that this year. We left it at the 34 cents.
Okay, so our budget's the same minus the two properties that came online?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes. Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a note though, too, the, the levy that you assess, that goes against the properties in the business district.
Just in the business district, that's correct.
It's not for the properties.
Right. Anybody else can look at their tax statement, it doesn't say VP number one. That's only on if you're in the, if you're in the downtown.
If you want to pitch it, Jim will always take it.
We, we could add you, yes. Maybe we could, I don't know if that's legal, so. All right, anything else?
Unless there's anybody else with questions. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we've made it through all 24 items on our agenda, so we'll, unless there's anything else, we will adjourn.